Good evening and welcome once again. Welcome to tonight's virtual meeting of the Boston School Committee. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much for that. And, you know, I am a parent of three BPS students, but I can never seem to get them to want to be on camera and hold the flag for us, but maybe one of these meetings. We have a full agenda tonight, but before we begin, given that this is a virtual meeting, we ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll and take attendance of all the members. So Ms. Sullivan, if you would, and if all the members would please unmute their microphones to indicate your presence.
Sure, I'm sorry, if you could just bear with me. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, present.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Present.
Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Mr. Tran? Ms. Dr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. LaCanto? Mr. LaCanto?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Ms. Sullivan. So as many of you know, tonight's meeting is being broadcast and shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and YouTube at a later date, and that link will also be posted to the school committee's webpage. For those of you that are joining us on Zoom, tonight's meeting, as well as those who might be checking in with us later, tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the April 29th Meeting tab. As you may be familiar, we have interpretation services available at all of our meetings. Tonight, there will be an interpreter available in Spanish. Mr. Bernal, would you please unmute yourself and introduce yourself in Espanol?
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Juan Bernal. I am the Spanish interpreter. I will provide live interpretation during the public comment portion of the meeting for those in need of interpretation. I will proceed now to make the same comment in Spanish. Buenas tardes para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy el intérprete para español y voy a proveer interpretación en vivo durante la reunión y durante los comentarios públicos para aquellas personas que necesiten el servicio de interpretación. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias. Please proceed, Mr. LaCanto. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernal. Thank you as well to those members of the public that signed up for public comment this evening. Sign up for both public comment periods closed at 4:30 PM. And we'll note this when we get the public comment a little bit later as well. But just as a reminder for folks that have just tuned in, if you are speaking tonight and you have signed up to testify this evening, please make sure that your Zoom account is logged in using the same name that you use to sign up for public comment this evening. So that way, it makes it a lot easier for all of us to find you in the participant category and move you up so that you can speak when it's your turn. So thank you for working with us and thank you for continuing to work with us as we move through this new era of virtual meetings. So we'll begin now with the business, which typically begins with the approval of minutes from prior meetings. And we're seeking approval this evening for minutes from the April 15th, 2020, school committee meeting. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 15th meeting as presented.
No move.
Sounds like Mr. Tran and a second from Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none. Again, as this is a virtual meeting, we do not ask for unanimous consent, but we do ask for the executive secretary to call the roll for all action items, including the approval of minutes. So members, if you please unmute Ms. Sullivan, we please call the roll.
Dr. Coleman? Dr. Coleman?
I don't believe, is Dr. Coleman on?
Okay. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellius.
She's muted.
Sorry.
Thank you.
If I do this all day long, I'd have that mute button figured out by now. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, everybody, for being with us tonight. And thanks, everybody, who's on virtually. Have just very brief comments today. I want to first give some updates on our meals. Early this week, we surpassed 300,000 meals served since school opened, or excuse, since school closed on March 17th. And as of today, we've provided 34,464 meals across 17 BPS sites. And I just cannot thank our food nutrition staff, custodians, bus drivers, monitors, and all our hundreds of volunteers who put in the effort. And special thanks to Tammy Poust, Sam DePina, and Charlene Briner on our team, who have been shepherding this along with the logistics and the coordination with our city sites as well. So many thanks to everybody and the whole team effort to get that done. Tomorrow, we're on track to surpass 100,000 meals delivered to our special ed students who would otherwise maybe have difficulty getting those. So many thanks to our special ed team, in addition to all the others that I mentioned, in getting those meals out to our families. We are serving about 15,000 meals a day, including about 4,500 to 5,000 meals that are being delivered. So that's quite a bit of food going out the door, and it's much needed. And we say that we're not just in the education business, but we're also in the business of taking care of our children and families and whole communities' health and well-being during this time of COVID. Breakfast and lunch, just as a reminder, are served Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 11:30. Information on locations and dozens of other emergency meal sites throughout the city of Boston is available at bostonpublicschools.org. You can also call 311 and find out about city of Boston sites as well. Thank you again to our food nutrition staff, bus drivers, monitors, volunteers. And a special thank you to Mr. O'Neil for visiting this week to several of our sites and bringing them some joy. As for technology, we had a milestone that we surpassed this week with distributing more than 30,000 Chromebooks for our students since school started on March, excuse me, since school closed. I don't want to say started. Remote learning started on March 17th. Access to adequate technology is essential for our students to continue learning at home. This includes Wi-Fi. And so we've also been able to provide hotspots to over 2,400 students. So really excited about that opportunity and then working with families with Comcast and Verizon, a couple of our partners who have been working with us on our internet services. Again, if you need a Chromebook, please go to bostonpublicschools.org/laptop, and that is available in 10 district languages. So if you know somebody, a neighbor, someone who needs one, please go to bostonpublicschools.org/laptop and sign up. I wanted to inform the school committee that we did receive DESI guidance late on Friday regarding the remote learning expectations that they had for school districts. We have been working hard to adjust our remote learning expectations to those that the DESI has put out, as well as a provision in there regarding the 185th calendar day of the school year. And an opportunity for us to appeal, given that we did provide additional learning opportunities for students during that week, that first week of closure. And so I'm going to be giving you, Mr. Chair, a letter tomorrow requesting that we move forward with an appeal for our last day of school and also in that recommendation for our seniors and their last day. So expect that in the box tomorrow, and that will outline the appeal process. As for remote learning, we're well on our way. Teachers have been furiously going and getting professional development and sharing best practice. Very proud of the great examples that we're seeing across the district. As we know, though, there are several teachers who are still emerging in their skills. And so we continue to provide professional development to them during this time and finding new ways to engage our school leaders to ensure that we're mitigating as much learning loss as possible. We know that we are going longer now this school year after the governor's announcement last week. So we will be going to the end of the school year in a remote environment and providing instruction that way. We will be ramping up a little bit more of our expectations around how we support our students, especially those who we still know may not be connected or not engaging. We plan on looking at new data dashboards and getting information and sharing that out with our Equity Roundtable, which we've been meeting with every week since the closure. We'll also be communicating that out to our families, and we'll be letting them know what the new expectations are as we begin to take attendance and begin to work with our families and provide for personalized plans for those students who are struggling the most. So with that, that's all that I have.
Got to unmute myself as well. Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent. We'll open it up now to members for questions and discussion. Looks like Ms. Robinson will speak first. For others, if you'd like to virtually raise your hand using the Zoom option to do that or otherwise figure out a way to get my attention, we'll go around the horn. All right? Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the update and all the extremely hard work that everyone is doing. Just thank everyone for what they're doing. Couple of questions around the meals. Now that the school closure has been extended to the end of the year, is the expectation that we will still continue to provide meals? Or I had heard something about there was a plan whereby families would be getting an extra $5.20 a day on their SNAP cards to pay for food since children are now home?
Yeah, those are really good questions, Ms. Robinson. We are doing a couple of things. One, we are absolutely going to continue to deliver food. There is a new way of delivering food in terms of trying to do multiple days of food to families. It's been, that becomes less burdensome for the family to be able to deliver them multiple days. And it's also greater efficiency for us. So we've been trying that out this week. And then in terms of the additional resources to families, I haven't heard the amount that you shared, but I do know that there are some flexibilities that came with the last stimulus package around the EBT cards. I know that our staff is exploring those options. I don't think that we have anything to communicate with on that, though, for tonight.
All righty, thank you. My other question, again, is about the continuation of online learning. So the question is, how are we engaging with families? I mean, we all read every day in the newspapers the number of stories of families who are just frustrated, et cetera, with what's doing or have just decided to sign off. So my question is, are we at all able to engage family by family, not school? You know, because many families have multiple children in multiple schools who have different expectations. How are we checking in to find out? How is this actually impacting families and what their recommendations back through us are with regard of how much they can really handle and how well they're actually handling it? I know we have the best of intentions, but there's a reality on the other side of that, that some families, this is really more than they're able to cope with.
Yeah, so, you know, we did a survey of our families to find out their needs, and we've been trying to run down and support our families, you know, all the way from principals giving me texts saying families are in this kind of crisis and me rallying support from the mayor and the city partners to help those families, to really more of a coordinated effort with our school support team, Andrea or Andrea Amador and her team providing mental health supports to the student and to the family and guidance around ABA supports for families during this time. And so, and we've been also helping them get connected and online through Mark Racine's team as well. We have a helpline for families, so we've been working on that. There's a number of ways. I know that also they're doing Parent University. So they're just starting now to do more outreach with families around remote learning and providing additional support. But I would say that the best support for families is going to come in the next phase, and we'll be outlining that in the remote learning plans because that's the support that we're going to write for students who are either Tier 2 or Tier 3, meaning needing additional kind of intervention in the family. And they'll be working with the school's student support team to create success plans and personalize learning a little bit more for each child and their family. And I think that's where it's going to come, working with our social workers and counselors and psychologists and school personnel at the family level. And then we'll rally support out for those families based on what they need because everybody has a unique need.
But what do we say to the family who says, "It's just too much"? Yeah. I can't, you know, their families, you know, their kids doing their homework in the back of cars because parents are working, you know, driving to deliver food or other things themselves. So how are we really, I mean, you know, it's, we know our family situations are very diverse and probably have significantly more struggles than many of the middle-class suburban families do. But our expectations are the same versus their own capacity and ability to even focus, given all the other things they're concerned about. I guess trying to figure out how do we take into consideration the adult needs, the reality of that, and our desire to educate kids all at the same time? Where's the release valve for any of these pressures?
The, I think, you know, you're asking the 24,000 question or whatever they call that. This is the hardest thing for us, especially with our students who have disabilities and parents who have depended on those services, those face-to-face, in-person services to be delivered at school. And it's just been a dilemma for us with the sheltering-in-place order and not being able to provide those supports to families. So we know that that's hard. But we have tried to really support with telehealth supports. We've tried to beam in, so to speak, occupational therapy and physical therapy and opportunities as we can and as it's available for the family. That's the best we can do, given the social distancing at this point right now. And then I guess the other piece then is where we do see learning loss and try to mitigate that during our summer school planning, if it's possible, if we have any release on the social distancing to be able to look at our plans for the future and how we might be able to help accelerate some of the loss we might be seeing.
Okay, thank you.
But we have to, I think we just, the best answer is we have to do it one by one because every family is very uniquely experiencing this pandemic. And there's no one solution for all families. And so that's why we're instituting as part of our remote learning plan, a part that calls for school leaders to hold a student support team meeting with the professional, support professionals, so that we can, one by one, support our students who are most in need.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you very much for those questions, Ms. Robinson. Mr. O'Neil's up next. And before we turn it over to Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Sullivan, will you please recognize Dr. Coleman has joined the meeting, and you can record his attendance.
Yes, welcome.
Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Superintendent. And those numbers you're reporting on food are incredible because you know, for so many of our students, it's the main meal that they have. And so thank you for, you know, sharing with me places to visit this week. I did go to East Boston High School yesterday and the Condon and Frederick Pilot School today and, you know, met with the teams there putting it out. I do want to give a particular shout-out as well to Katie's Closet, the nonprofit that is working with so many of our schools because they are actually providing toiletries, personal needs for our young men and women. So everything from toothpaste and body wash to deodorant and personal hygiene needs. Once we...
From the students.
I'm sorry?
BSAC students suggested that we do that.
Well, thank you to the BSAC for suggesting it because I was very impressed to see that at each of the locations as well. The other thing that surprised me, quite frankly, and I was very appreciative to find out, is how many teachers are picking up meals. I noticed that in East Boston from a lot of the elementary schools that come to the high school to pick up to then drive and deliver to the families as well. So thank you for that. I did want to touch base, Superintendent. I know you have, as you said, we just got the new guidance from DESI about remote learning, 1.5, we'll call it. It's not quite 2.0. I know you're pushing forward. You're in the middle of a tremendous amount of planning with your school leaders. I'm wondering if you could give us some expectation on when you feel you will have more firm communications around one coordinated schedule so parents can have a better sense from school leaders about what the expectation is for their child for the coming week? There's a lot of frustration now, as you well know, about this teacher says, "Here's the Zoom password for this class, and here's the Zoom password for that class." And the parents are kind of pulling their hair out right now. So I believe you're working on more coordinated schedules. So one, what is the timeframe that parents could expect to hear that? And two, when are you anticipating having more guidance regarding grading for the remainder of the year? And also for our high school seniors, what are the plans going to be around graduations? More, I know you're still talking with the school leaders, trying to get consensus. Just more, what is the expectation of when parents and students can look forward to getting answers to those key things that are facing them now?
Yeah, thanks for those questions. All of the remote learning plans, we're going to share those final plans with school leaders. So those should be out next, by Monday, for sure, for parents. And they've been working on their master schedules to avoid any duplication and that sort of thing. Of course, you know, the series of events was to get the MOU approved first, then from there, get the DESI guidance, which we got on Friday night, and then to revise and just refine our already good work done by our academic office on our remote learning plan. And they had been meeting for several weeks. And then we brought it to our school superintendents and our school leaders, and we've been making some adjustments, especially on the grading side, which is a piece that we had to really negotiate how that was going to work, given, you know, the unique nature of the situation that we're in. And so we anticipate grading, master schedules, information about the student support team and information about student success plans and how that's going to align to the prerequisite standards that the commissioner put out on Friday night. So that should all be clear by the end of the week or early next week. And then in terms of high school graduation, both Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Bruegmann have been working with the headmasters on graduation. And also, I've been talking to the BSAC members, and it appears that the general consensus is that they would prefer an in-person graduation. And so we're going to wait as long as we possibly can and hope that we are not sheltering in place and that we can figure out how this might be possible, either late in the summer. Even people said they would try to do Thanksgiving if they did it, you know, at Thanksgiving time. So we're still looking at the in-person option. However, we are working on a pretty special recognition for the entire class of 2020. I don't want to give about too many details, but we're working on some ways to recognize and acknowledge this incredible milestone of our seniors. So we're working on those plans, but I don't want to give them away yet.
Okay, great. So just make sure I heard you properly. As far as when more coordinated schedules and information on grading will come out is probably next week. The Friday night you mentioned, I think, was actually when we got the guidance from the commissioner last Friday night, right?
Yeah, we got it Friday night. So we've been finalizing all of our pieces, and I know the team was working furiously just today. So it's just getting it to our school leaders then. We normally have our call with them on Fridays. I know that there's a headmaster call, I think, tomorrow. And so we will finalize some of those decisions and then either late Friday or early next week, probably, we will be getting those plans out because we're starting our remote learning on Monday.
Okay. And just as one quick follow-up on that is, as we do have a number of autonomous schools in BPS, has it been, are we going to have more of a coordinated approach on these, particularly around grading and that type of thing? Or schools kind of marching to their beat of their own drum or if they are pilot or renovation or in district charters, so to speak?
I would say that the, I would say that the reason that we're having these big discussions is because everybody has really marched to their own beat for a while, and we really are trying to be much more coordinated and unified in this approach during this time. And so I think that that is going to be the expectation. So what's ever in the remote learning plan is something we're all agreeing to. And I think that's what's taken a little bit longer to negotiate those conversations, to make sure it was very collaborative. And so we should have more information for everyone early next week, for sure, if not earlier.
That's great. Thanks, Superintendent. And I do hope the school leaders of, you know, that do have more autonomy are, you know, trying to work towards a common path. I think particularly around grading and everything, this is a really important time for us to have consistency across the district. So I hope they're having the same spirit of collaboration that you're trying to bring to it as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. O'Neil. And just to add on to some of the conversations that we've been having with respect to the end of the year and honoring our graduates, it's bittersweet because we were, we always look forward to honoring our valedictorians each year. And we had a new partner this year to honor the valedictorians. We were looking forward to the Red Sox hosting us at the EMC Club at Fenway Park in late May. But we'll have to do that next year. And we will look forward to that partnership in the future. But we do have, on the bright side, plans to figure out some sort of way to honor those valedictorians virtually. And we have a number of partners that typically underwrite that event each year that have committed funds to us that we can use for a variety of purposes. Typically, we give valedictorians some sort of financial support as they go off to college, you know, typically a gift card to go to Target or something like that. And we're looking forward to, through the generosity of these donors, to be able to do that once again. I know BSAC had also reached out and was looking to find a way to honor their graduating seniors, and we're looking forward to figuring out a way to do that. Other members, do we have questions or comments for the superintendent? Okay, just making sure that I get everybody here. Looks like no further comments or questions. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's report as presented. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Is there any discussion or objection to that motion? Hearing none. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila? Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. LaCanto?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Moving on now, before we get to public comment, this is, we have one meeting each month where we ask our student representative, Evelyn Reyes, a senior at the O'Brien School, who we're hoping will share with us very soon where she might be going for college next year, to present her monthly report. Ms. Reyes?
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Earlier this month, BSAC members met with high school superintendents, Dr. Bruegmann and Dr. McIntyre, as well as the three headmasters from the exam schools to discuss the differing workloads faced by high school students. to discuss the differing workloads faced by high school students from across the district. Um, we were able to ask some questions and provide some suggestions on how to move forward around making that more or looking, making it so that students can handle that workload a little better. Um, during school vacation week, BSAC students participated in a virtual town hall with various other organizations from across the city. The mayor, the superintendent and representative Presley were all able to speak at the forum. And in that time, students had a chance to reflect on all the changes that this time has brought upon us and share personal testimonies related to the situation. BSAC members also took the time to be part of a training on phone banking and what we can now call remote lobbying. Um, and we, both members from BSAC and from the student cabinet, also had the opportunity to meet with the commissioner of elementary and secondary education last week. And in that meeting, we asked for clarification around the memorandum of understanding between DPS and DESI, as well as information about the impact of the crisis on MCAS and what grading might look like for terms three and four. Um, looking forward, we continue to meet weekly with the superintendent, and I'm sure that she can attest to the fact that we grill her for every, for information every time. Um, and also in regards to college plans, I can share those now, but I will be attending Columbia University next year. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's excellent. And that's incredible news, uh, Ms. Reyes. Uh, really, uh, congratulations. And um, we wouldn't expect anything less from you, of course. Um, but um, I I think we're all probably deeply envious of um, you know, the prospect of getting to move to uh Morningside Heights and um, spend the next four years at Columbia. So congratulations. That's, that's a testament to your uh, your efforts and your uh, your focus. And um, we know you're gonna go and do great things. Uh, members, do you have further questions uh or comments for this, the student representative?
Great work.
Congratulations. Great work.
I just, I I'm I'm blown away. I'm so happy for you, so proud of you, and it's been an honor to work with you. You have really pushed out thinking hard uh for two years now. And you've done a, uh, brought such credit to BSAC overall. And Columbia doesn't know what they're getting. I wish, I wish that, I wish them well. They're a very lucky university.
Uh, I just want to say felicidades. Estoy muy orgullosa de ti. And um, I also wanted to say that we uh had, was it last week, Evelyn, or the week before? I don't know. All the weeks are melding into each other, that you facilitated a conversation. Uh, and you were amazing. So uh, I agree with uh Mr. O'Neal. Columbia doesn't know what they're getting. So we're, we are really, really proud of you. So congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. Uh, are there other questions or comments for uh Ms. Reyes? Well, hearing none. Congratulations once again, and thank you for uh the update. Thank you as well for the work that you've been doing um in uh the advocacy world. I I know we uh, we mention it quite often, but this is work that's um helping to fill the gap and and build the uh, the civic uh spirit for our next generation. And so we really appreciate that um, that spirit moving forward. And um we know you won't be a stranger. Uh, we'll move on now uh to our general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Sorry about that.
There you go.
Um, public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Those who require interpretation services will receive initial two minutes per person. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or select a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. And I'll also ask people to just make sure that you please sign into Zoom using the same name that you use to sign up for public comments. And that will help us to identify you um when your turn arrives. Um, we'll begin this evening with Michael Heischman. He'll be followed by Matt Cameron and Robert Jenkins.
Ms. Sullivan, thank you. And uh, as we are uh inviting Mr. Heischman into the room, I just um want to take a a couple uh uh seconds to note a few things. First of all, thank you to all the folks that uh joined us at uh last uh school committee meeting to speak on the student privacy policy uh presentation um and proposal from the district. As we mentioned at that last meeting, um, we have asked uh the district to go back and work on that proposal uh a bit more um and bring a few other uh issues um into uh that proposal that uh were raised by committee members in our um very long discussion on that proposal as well as the um uh voluminous feedback that we received from the public. So uh, we had reached out earlier today uh to a number of folks that had signed up to speak about the privacy policy. Um, the privacy policy is not on the agenda tonight. Um, and we, uh, the district's not ready to come back with a revised proposal, but they are planning to go and speak to a number of the community groups uh that have expressed uh interest in this issue prior to bringing a um a uh revised proposal to us once again. So I thank those that uh had signed up to speak on uh the privacy policy for uh pulling themselves back and and waiting for um either a meeting with the superintendent and her staff to speak about the issue or for future meeting when we do have a revised proposal back on the agenda. I also want to just take a a further uh moment to note uh that a a number of folks signed up to speak about um individual uh personnel matters. And I want to take a moment to remind folks that we're a policymaking body. Uh, we don't uh get involved in uh individual uh personnel matters uh with the district, nor do we uh engage in a discussion about uh individual personnel uh decisions of the district. Uh, that's um, that's operations, and that's what the superintendent does. And so I'd ask uh anyone that might be remaining uh on the list this evening that was intending to speak about individual uh personnel uh decisions of the district to uh choose your um uh your words and and please uh maintain the appropriate confidences uh regarding uh personnel records and um and employment matters in the district. And with that, uh, Mr. Heichman, uh, I I see you're on the line. Please uh join us and and begin.
Thank you. Uh, Evelyn Reyes, mazel tov. Evelyn, congratulations. That's wonderful news. Uh, I know that the school privacy item is not on today's agenda. However, I feel compelled to say something very positive about the school committee, which I don't often, often do. I was very impressed with your strong stand against the school department's proposal at the April fifteenth meeting. You had listened to our testimony and listened to the community. Thank you. Since April fifteenth, I'm glad to hear that Mr. LoCorno just said that uh the school department is going to meet with the community. Um, well, right now, I currently support the Learn Without Fear proposal by SIM and the Unafraid Educators. It would be much, much better if there would be an agreement with the school department and the community about this proposal. Once again, I want to speak against the MOU signed by our superintendent and the DESE. It is shameful that the DESE has come in with their plan to impose control over fifteen of our public schools. And this is very important. Without any prior public input, for excellent reasons, our school department and community's attention has been diverted to survival issues. How long had this agreement been negotiated between the superintendent and uh and uh DESE? This was done before the schools were closed. Uh, this, this, this proposal was signed before members of this, this uh policy, this, this uh very important public decision was made before it came before the school committee and the public. We did not have an opportunity to discuss this issue before the document was signed. The Commonwealth is part of our problem. They have failed to provide the necessary resources that our school system needs. Let them do their job. They provide the necessary resources and we'll do our job, which is to provide a quality education for all of our children.
Thank you, Mr. Heichman.
Sullivan?
Thank you. Our next speaker is is Matt Cameron, and he'll be followed by Robert Jenkins and Leo Wu. Mr. Cameron with us?
Ms. Sullivan, as uh Mr. Cameron's joining us, I just wanted, um, we don't typically address um public comment, but I did want to just uh take a note. First of all, thank you, Mr. Heichman. It was kind of you to um speak highly of uh the school committee. Um, I did want to point out just two um specific items that were in your testimony regarding the um uh MOU that the district has signed with DESI. Uh, it's been a frequent theme that I've seen in criticism about the uh MOU and it's inaccurate. Uh, one is the issue uh regarding the kaleidoscope schools, the the group of fifteen that you noted in the uh, the MOU. Uh, that is not a state takeover. Uh, the kaleidoscope, as um uh Dr. Casselli has uh described in her presentation last week, or excuse me, the last meeting, uh, is a professional learning com- uh community. It's for um intended for professional development. It is not a state takeover. Um, secondarily, um, we are, as a body, going to take a vote on um the MOU at its future meeting. We've made that clear in in previous meetings, and I want to make sure that the public is aware of that. Uh, so thank you for bringing that uh to the fore once again. Uh, Ms. Sullivan, has um, Mr. Cameron joined us?
I believe so. We have someone identified as Matt. Is that Mr. Cameron? Mr. Cameron?
It's on mute, Mr. Cameron.
Uh, sorry, this isn't, this is a different Matt. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead. Could you give us your last name, please?
Sorry, this is, I'm not signed up to testify.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you for letting us know. Um, Mr. Jenkins is not with us either, it appears. So we'll move on to maybe our sorry? Leo Wu? Is Ms. Wu with us?
Hello?
Hello.
Uh, this is Leo Wu.
Hi, welcome.
Uh, how are, hey, how are you? Um, because I didn't have translator for me, I tried to my best for English, okay?
Yes.
So I have view is request. The first is um, request to ex- extend this some semester to the end of July. Uh, the second, request summer school to teach, uh, the teacher uh uh come back to teach our uh, the class, the classroom, I mean, the student. Number three, request to stay school, uh, start school earlier in Au- August. So this, uh, we need to request the, the school is uh earlier in August. Number four, request our um student in public school for stay one more year in the STEM grade. Number five, how to uh raise the special education student in fifth grade for this year. They are staying for one more year, stay for fifth grade or uh going to sixth grade. This is very hard to special uh student. Um, so uh my English not that good. I'm surprised because two days ago, I tried for them uh translator to me for today, the meeting, but you know, it's, it's, it's hard to, um, because we suppose uh has translator for me today, but it doesn't have it. I'm so surprising today, you know, and um I try my best. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Wu, thank you very much, and uh we appreciate you trying your best. Your message has certainly been received and and we appreciate that. And um, if you would like to return uh to speak at a, at a future meeting, uh, we will uh make every effort to uh get a translator available for you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Next speaker?
Thank you. Um, when I call your name for public comment, if you could please try to virtually raise your hand, that will help us identify you in our list. Emiliano Falcone, Diane Serrano and Clara Ruiz are our next speakers. Is Emiliana Falcone with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Emiliano Falcone Moreno. I am the policy counsel for the Technology for Liberty Program at the ACLU of Massachusetts. On behalf of the ACLU and our more than ten thousand members and supporters in Boston, I submit this testimony in support of the Learn Without Fear draft policy proposal related to Boston Public Schools and Boston Police Department information sharing practice. Uh, I know that they, I received an email that the uh, this was not in the item, but I feel, we feel compelled nonetheless to testify about this issue. So we at the ACLU believe that Boston Public Schools must be safe and welcoming places for all students, no matter their immigration status. Students shouldn't fear going to school would result in their information being shared with ICE. Unfortunately, policy and practice failed to create the safe learning environment for our students. For example, at least one East Boston High School student was deported after the Boston Public Schools shared information about him with the BPD, which shared with, with ICE. The policy drafted by Learn Without Fear protects students' privacy and prevents unnecessary sharing of information between Boston Public Schools, Boston School Police, Boston Police Department and ultimately ICE. There are five main ways in which the policy accomplishes this. First, the draft policy provides that a Boston School Police Officer can only create a student report in four serious situations. These are when serious bodily harm to an individual has occurred as a result of will, willful conduct by a student, a true and credible threat to the safety of the school arises that would amount to criminal conduct, a student is in possession of firearms, or a student unlawfully possesses or uses art controlled substances, provided those substances are not marijuana, nicotine or alcohol. Additionally, these reports, as defined is in the draft policy, cannot contain information related to immigration status, ethnicity, national origin, or similar categories that may be used to harm students. Second, the draft policy provides for strong protections regarding how and when these students' records can be transmitted to the BPD and other entities outside Boston Public Schools. For example, both Boston Public Schools personnel and Boston School Police Officers will be prohibited from sending information related to students to the Boston Regional Intelligence Center. Third, the draft policy has very important transparency and communications provisions. Under them, students, families, school administrators, teachers and counselors must be made aware of this policy by including a copy of the policy in the guide to Boston Public Schools. Fourth, the draft policy has critical accountability provisions. To begin with, it mandates that superintendent create monthly reports containing, among other information, the number of student reports created and the outside ag- agencies who access them. These monthly transparency reports must include a description of the demographics that is race, gender, age and grade of those students included in the reports. I reference which one of the four types of incidents I mentioned above was the basis for the report.
Mr. Falcone?
Yes, o- one, uh, yes, one, one more sentence, sorry. Ultimately, the advocate's draft policy provides necessary limitations to the kind of information sharing that can occur originating from the Boston Public Schools. This draft policy is a necessary step towards the dismantling of the school deportation pipeline that currently exists in the city of Boston, and that is so harmful to our immigrant communities. The ACLU of Massachusetts respectfully, very quick, respectfully encourages the board to implement a draft policy so that BPS students can learn without fear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, if the following people could please virtually raise your hands, Diane Serrano, Clara Ruiz, Elizabeth Badger and John Mudd. And we'll begin with Diane Serrano. Diane with us? Clara Ruiz? Ms. Ruiz?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello, my name is Clara Ruiz and I'm still in a bunker here at Community College. Unfortunately, you won't be hearing from Diane, from Diane Serrano tonight. And other folks to sign up tonight to an email early today, the limited day amount of people testifying on the issue of student privacy policy. It is a It is a supporting that after the effort and time people took to work on their testimonies and prepare for a discussion that it continues, whether on the agenda or not, now they are told as many to hold those testimonies until further notice. The issue of BPS allowing information of undocumented immigrant and other student information to reach ICE and other agencies through databases. And I am passionate about this topic, not only because I'm an immigrant myself, but also because I know what it feels like to leave behind the shadows in eternity. I, um, I understand a lot of information is required to keep students safe, but I don't understand why student information like ethnicity or background are leading to this is student being discriminated against in profile when it's, it is obvious that there are things that are happening that are bigger and more important. The school should be a place where children feel safe and where making a mistake doesn't need to get in talking to the school to prison pipeline. The school should be a place where students and faculty or staff are helped to become better individuals. It is unfair that because of your lack of status or racial background, you are isolated, judged and forgotten. I am faithful, I am a faithful believer that school should be a safe place. BPS keeps saying that this policy takes care of concern. On page three, one of the paragraphs attempt to address what incidents are under BPD. Only homicide and social are listed. What are the other ones? This is very vague. It doesn't actually outline clear criteria that separates routine disciplinary matters from law enforcement matters. We need a policy where transparency, clear criteria, accountability and oversight is at the forefront. I want my nephews and future children to feel safe in public schools, to feel that the people who are guiding them want them to have a better future. We have to act now and pass a policy that is effective for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Badger. Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. If we could hold off just for a moment, I believe Superintendent Cassellius wanted to chime in on the, the privacy policy issue.
I do. I just want the public and the speaker to know that this is a really important policy for us all and we want to have the right folks at the table. We want to be able to move this policy forward. We are dealing with remote learning right now. We did promise that we would meet with this group. Once we get the remote learning up, we have said that we would meet with them and we're also hoping because of the comments made at the last school committee meeting that it would be a whole policy with the access policy added to it. So, having those two policies bringing together and into one school committee for your review. And so, we're still waiting on a few pieces, but I am committed to meeting with the group and we did ask them to meet with me in lieu of speaking so that we could get this resolved.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Badger. Ms. Badger with us?
Hi, good, good evening. This is Elizabeth Badger from the Pair Project. In lieu of the comments that were made, I'm going to withhold my testimony right now. I just want to welcome the committees speaking about the privacy policy with immigration, legal advocates like myself have been working on this issue for several years now. So, I'd appreciate if the committee members could reach out to us and include us in that conversation to share our experiences about working with Boston students impacted by the sharing of BPS reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badger. Our next speaker is John Mudd. Mr. Mudd? Mr. Mudd, welcome.
Mr. Mudd, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I want to talk briefly about the strategic plan and the district operational plan. In my view, I think the 2025 strategic plan is a thoughtful, ambitious vision. For those of us who have been working on these issues for many years, the fact that you place eliminating opportunity and achievement gaps as a number one priority is profoundly important. Thank you. It is a goal we can all share and take pride in. The plan recognizes and makes commitments in many critically important areas. For just a few, the comprehensive and district-wide professional development, teacher diversity, including language, literacy and culturally sustaining practices, teacher evaluation, accountability, engagement of youth parents and communities in school and district decision-making. But as it stands now, we can all join in working towards the shared goals presented in the strategic plan. But the question of implementation is the central concern as I and others have repeatedly stressed from the beginning of this strategic plan process. How will the district make a reality of these visions in schools and classrooms? Many of us have seen plans for many superintendents, but we haven't seen many changes in practice that actually reduce achievement gaps. The superintendent presented the district operational plan at the last school committee meeting. Unfortunately, as it stands, the operational plan seems thin in comparison with the richness of the strategic plan. There are many gaps. At this point, I think it would be extremely helpful if it could be clarified whether this document, this, as it stands, the district operational plan is intended as an organic document that will be developed and elaborated in an ongoing process with the opportunity for stakeholder and community input into the plan as it develops. That is key. I would hope we would hear something in the, in the discussions later in the meeting. There are some immediate changes, I would hope to see. One, ensure that the comprehensive district-wide professional development plan, which is assigned to human capital alone with a target of June 2020, will in fact include the professional development activities of all relevant actors, including academics, English Office of English Learners, Special Education and the use of school professional development time in the BTU contract. Two, speed up the look bill planning with submission of new programs to DSE in January 2021 so the bilingual strategy superseding SEI can be implemented the next school year. Recognize the specified teacher diversity action steps are too little, too late. And finally, include English learners with disabilities as a group to be addressed under special education reform and as a recognized subgroup for data reporting. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. If the following people could please virtually raise your hands. Rebecca Harbison, Jason Samaha, Ruby Reyes and Michael Berger. Please raise your hands on Zoom. And we'll begin with Rebecca Harbison. Is Rebecca with us? Let's see Rebecca. Jason Samaha. Jason with us? Ruby Reyes. Ms. Reyes with us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. I want to again thank Dr. Cassellius and BPS for supporting family needs during this pandemic. I also wanted to again request that the school committee ask for a supplemental budget from the city so that all schools can keep their staff for the coming year as they will be desperately needed as students return to classrooms. The response to the pandemic has been highlighting the needs, the need for employees who are the first to get cut in school budgets, including librarians, counselors, family engagement coordinators and paraprofessionals. These positions have proven how important their role is in maintaining communication with families in order to provide resources and support. With families having to deal with so much more now, the district needs to develop foundational budgets that create givens regardless of enrollment, school assignment or neighborhood. BPS needs to determine what a quality education is for every student in the district, then request that to have it funded. It should not take a public health crisis to realize how important these positions are and should become an embedded part of a school foundational budget. In addition to ensuring school committees, communities have what they need, BEJA also requests that the school committee revisit the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's memorandum of understanding signed on March 10th, just a few days before the school closures were announced. The MOU is dangerous because there are few to no specifics in it. This vagueness has opened the door for state receivership in the future by including a section that stipulates that if BPS does not meet the DSE outcomes that were not included, then DSE can terminate the agreement with 30-day written notice. DSE does not currently have the capacity for a full receivership of a district as large as BPS, but they might have the capacity in the next three years. In addition to the vagueness, what the MOU fails to do is include the voices of parents, students, educators and school communities. For example, is this experimental kaleidoscope network what Charlestown and East Boston schools need right now in the midst of a global pandemic? Is this what BPS needs right now in the midst of a global pandemic? DSE and BPS should not have assigned, should not have signed this agreement in the midst of a public health crisis. The school committee needs to push for this MOU to be overturned or at the very least pause for the next two years. That is, as it has the potential to turn into full receivership as an already signed contract. In addition, BEJA fully supports the policy developed by the Boston Teachers Unions, Educators and the Student Immigrant Movement in regards to student information sharing. They have developed a policy that has been vetted by attorneys and protects our children. Why is there such a delay in adopting this policy? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Could the following people please raise your hands virtually? Michael Berger, Kayana Lungalo, Sarah Sherman Stokes and Gerald Gabo. Thank you. We'll begin with Michael Berger. Is Mr. Berger with us? I don't see Mr. Berger. Kayana Lunglo? Sarah Sherman Stokes? Gerald, Gerald Gabo, Mr. Gabo?
Welcome, Ms. Gabo. Can you, can you unmute yourself, please? Any help there?
Yes.
Ms. Gabo?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. This is Gerald Gabo. I am a member of the ELL Task Force and also a community leader in the Haitian community. And I am calling tonight to testify around the remote learning for Haitian. And as you know, English learners and their families, they are basically half of the BPS community. And our concern is that all work should be designed with EL at the center, not the other way around. And what we realize is that most of the time, we have to adapt to our EL population instead of, you know, faking about them to be at the center. And the pandemic has basically revealed so much disparity and the lack of preparation that we have around our EL community. And that's one of the reason why, for example, the Haitian communities are suffering around the remote learning because there was no real plan in place before the pandemic prepared them for search to move. And as we look to the strategic plan, we have some concerns at the ELL Task Force where we don't see any path express how the district will go, will get beyond SEI. And as we know with the look act implementation that is going to probably be delayed by one more year. So, we realize that there is little or no attention given to native language as a priority or as a staffing concern. We look at the operational plan and there is no mention of ELS, SWD level. And also, there is not sufficient attention to system-wide multilingual, multicultural family engagement, which is an urgent need that has become ever clearer now with the closure of the school and with COVID-19. So, my request for today is that parents be at the center of any decisions. How do we support them so that they can really serve better the students? And also for us to take into consideration specific groups that are always behind in so many different ways around PS in the delivery method that BPS has.
Twenty seconds?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lacondo, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Well, thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you, Ms. Gabo, and to all of our speakers this evening. We appreciate, as always, your input. And again, I want to express my appreciation for those of you that have continued to give us feedback on the privacy policy. As you heard from the superintendent earlier, she'll be meeting, she and her team with a number of advocacy groups. I believe the superintendent had something further she wanted to say with respect to personnel matters as well. And superintendent, I believe you'll be bringing a full list of changes that you'll be proposing, you're intending to implement for the upcoming school year with respect to school leadership to a future school committee meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a comment and thank the speakers who were going to come in earlier today to speak to the school committee, obviously, and I think I've mentioned this before, once when another school came to, you know, share with the school committee a decision that was being made, but hadn't yet talked to me about it as superintendent. And I would request that teachers bring issues to me first and then to the school committee to resolve them, especially matters that are not pertinent to the school committee, like personnel matters. I think it's really important that teachers talk to me. I have been communicating with school leaders about some school changes. Either a school principal has been promoted or a school principal decided that they were leaving the district for family reasons, or they're getting their doctorate or some other reason that a principal might be choosing to leave. And then there are just a handful of principals, because we have 33 schools that we are really working on and there are transformation schools. They're in the bottom 10% of schools across the state of the Commonwealth and we are going to be working very strategically with them. And so, there are a handful of principal changes. I do want to bring those to the school committee at the next school committee. And I will talk to school teachers about those. Typically, I would have done that right after I talked to the school principal in person, but because we have COVID and we're in this environment, it's much more challenging and difficult to meet with full faculties in person, obviously. But when we have the new leader announced with the other moves, I will arrange for Zoom meetings with the schools to introduce the new leader and discuss why the decision was made, the way that it was in those transformation where there is a move. So, I just wanted to make that public, a public record. I want to thank the teachers for allowing me the opportunity to speak with them as a superintendent prior to coming to the school committee.
Well, thank you again, Superintendent, and we'll look forward to that update at the next meeting. So, moving on now, our agenda looks a little bit different tonight for those of you fellow members, as well as those of you in the public that are joining us for this meeting. We have a few, three to be exact, time-sensitive items pending, so the committee is going to receive those reports now and then vote immediately thereafter. And then later in the meeting, we'll, we'll return to one traditional report that we will, that includes an action item that we'll take an action on at a future meeting. So, we'll begin now with the interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds. For members and for members of the public, you recall that this is a typical exercise that we engage in each year where we authorize the district to expend certain funds before they have been received based on our understanding of money that is due to us via grants or other funding sources. So, at this time, I'd like to invite Anu Giant, our Director of Federal and State Grants, who has joined us for this meeting to provide a brief overview of that request. And for members, you have that, that request in your packets and I believe that's been posted to the website as well for folks that are following along at home. Ms. Giant?
Good evening, Chairman Lacondo, Superintendent, members of the school committee. As Chairman Lacondo said, this is an order that has been requested annually and we request this at this time due to the delay in receiving external fund award letters and finalized budgets. These are grants that are projected to be awarded for FY21 and the request is to approve an interim salary payment for personnel that we pay from these external funds, as well as encumbrances for any non-personnel payments we want to make on these prior to receiving the actual grant award letters.
Darn mute button. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Giant. Open it up now to members for any question or discussion. Please raise your hand or note that you'd like to speak in the chat. Going around, looks like, looks like no comments from members. Going around, looks like, looks like no comments from members. Well, as I mentioned earlier, again, this is a fairly routine procedure for us. And I do appreciate the district taking the time to update us on these efforts. I did want to just ask one question, Ms. Giant. With regard to federal grants, do we have any expectation that that outlook may change in the short term here for the current fiscal year? Or are we primarily concerned at this point with how the federal outlook is for the upcoming fiscal year and academic year?
So as of now, as per our conversations with the Council of Great City Schools, and Mr. O'Neil will know this as well, they have no indication that they'll be cutting any funding. So right now, the projections that we have, as we've laid out in this memo, are flat funding as per what we got for FY20 as well.
Very good, very good. Well, thank you so much for that update. We'll be, if there's no further questions or comments from the members, we'll be taking action on this request in a short while later in this meeting. Mr. O'Neil, did you have something to add?
I just wanted to comment on that comment. I think the only indication is there may be a potential of increased funding at the federal level if there is another CARES Act prior to a big stabilization act. It's a very, very outside chance, but as, as Mr. Giant said, I think we're fine. Nothing's going to be cut from the funding. The only potential is new funding coming in either now on a support basis or more importantly, starting July 1st for next year.
Very good. Thank you again, as always, for keeping on top of all this, Mr. O'Neil, through your work with the Council of Great City Schools. We'll move on to our next presentation, which is on the memorandum of understanding between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union regarding remote learning. As a reminder to members of the public, the school committee met briefly in public session and adjourned to executive session last evening via Zoom to discuss in executive session this proposal from the district for our consideration. And this is the, the agreement that the, the district and the BTU has reached to implement certain remote learning changes that affect the collective bargaining agreement between the teachers and the district, and more appropriately, the school committee. So we're going to turn it over now to our acting director of the Office of Labor Relations with the Boston Public Schools, Mr. Jeremiah F. Hassan, who has projected his screen and will walk us through a couple of short slides. And then we'll open it up to members for questions and comment.
Mr. Chair. Anything really quick?
Please.
Well, first, I want to thank Jeremiah for his leadership, also Tammy Poust, who worked with him and the entire labor team that went and helped us with this, as well as our academic team and so many others who contributed to this document. Also, I want to thank Jessica Tang and her bargaining team who came to the table. Took a while to get it done, but we did get it done. And I think that we have a strong foundation moving forward for what we think is going to provide for our students. And it is focused on students and getting students what they need during this time. And I'm just appreciative that we have this done and we can move forward with our remote learning. So I just wanted to give those shout-outs.
Yes, and good evening, Chairperson LaCanto, Superintendent Casalias, and committee members. As Chairperson LaCanto said, my name is Jeremiah Hassan, Acting Director for Labor Relations. And I'm just going to give you a brief presentation on the interim memorandum of understanding that we've tentatively agreed upon with the Boston Teachers Union regarding its members' remote work expectations during school closure. Running through the timeline, even before Mayor Walsh announced the school closures, we had been in contact with the union about the possibility of closing, so, and what would be expected of its members. So we started meeting fairly regularly during the closure period with the union. And then on March 25th, the governor extended the school closure beyond the initial April 27th date to May 4th. So the scope of our negotiations had to expand a little bit there. And then when it looked like it was going to proceed through the end of the school year, I had expanded again. But ultimately, on April 17th, we were able to reach what we believe is a fair agreement with the teachers' union. And here are some of the highlights. And the expectations focus on a set 20-hour-per-week schedule, which is pretty consistent across large urban districts that we looked at. We looked at LA, Chicago, some of the other districts, and everybody is kind of on that set 20 schedule. But there's two things to notice that is different. One, that the agreement allows us to utilize our members up to their regular contractual hourly day. So there is that possibility to go beyond the set time. And then we also designated 15 hours of synchronous time that is really focused strictly on student instruction. Because some of these other agreements that we looked at, planning meetings and school-wide meetings ate into that time. But we really wanted to focus on student instruction. So that's why we agreed to the 15 hours where that has to be the primary focus. And in addition to daily instruction, teachers are required to engage in substantive communication with each of their students at least every three days. So that goes beyond just the, maybe a class-wide presentation or instruction and really reaching out to the individual students. We're also requiring each BTU member to engage in five hours of professional development beyond the typical professional, professional development that takes place during the school year, focused strictly on the best practices in remote learning. We want our members to really be prepared to engage in this new type of learning that some of them don't necessarily have the skills to do. So we think the five hours will get everybody up to the bare minimum. And then additionally, the, during the closure period, we're asking for a suspension of the evaluation process. But we agreed with the union that we will still be holding members accountable for their performance and conduct during the closure through the school district's employee discipline process. So getting into the impact on the current contractual working conditions, obviously, the clearest change is that everything will be performed remotely as opposed to in our school buildings. We're looking for our school leaders to create master schedules for age-appropriate, depending on the classes, for at least three hours a day, again, but for certain situations, that they can go up to the regular contractual hour for our BTU members. And as I mentioned, the evaluation process will be put on hold, but evaluated will be held accountable through the employee discipline process. And at the end of the closure, we will be uploading summary memos of each union member's performance during the closure. So that they really will be held accountable to make sure that they're doing everything we need for them to do to provide the best remote learning experience for our students. And looking at the equity impact, an approval vote. BPS recognizes that the closings and moving to a remote learning system could potentially exacerbate some of the racial and other disparities across the district. So we really wanted to work with the union to mitigate the negative impacts on students of color, students with special needs, English language learners, and other students that are from historically marginalized populations. So really, we're asking for a vote to approve, approve this MOU because we believe it enables the district, our teachers, and the school leaders to provide an effective remote learning plan for all of our students. So thank you, Chairperson LaCanto, and committee members.
Thanks very much, Jeremiah. I know you and Ms. Poust worked quite hard alongside the superintendent in bringing us to a equitable resolution with our, our partners in the teacher ranks. Thank you to the BTU and President Tang as well in their hard work in getting this done in a way that maintains some consistency with the, the teaching day, the learning day, and allows the district to move forward with its remote learning plan that will be unveiled next week and discussed to a much greater degree at our next meeting. So I'll open it up now to our members for questions and discussion. Noting again that we, we did meet in executive session for members of the public's notice yesterday and had extensive discussion about this matter. Members, are there further questions or concerns? Let's start with Dr. Coleman.
Let me get back in here. This is, you know, nationally, this is an incredibly difficult situation. I want to commend both the superintendent and BTU for engaging in such difficult conversations about how to create clear expectations for teachers and families so that we can move forward, provide them the support they need to succeed. So this is very difficult. You know, I know that, that I want to appreciate the work that to get here. And I'm glad that we have some clarity and now have to give full support to our, one of our most precious resources is our teachers.
Thanks very much, Dr. Coleman. That's much appreciated. Are there other members with questions or discussion on this proposal? Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Hassan, for your presentation. Just a quick question for you, please, on, on two things. One, the timing of this, this is through the end of calendar year or up until next September?
No, this is limited to the end of this, this school year. So the agreement would expire on the 85th, 185th scheduled date. So that June 26th, I believe, is the expiration date on the agreement.
Okay. And obviously, we don't know what's going to be happening with remote learning next year. So hopefully, we can use that as an opportunity of what we learn in this spring and then think about how to do it then. And could you just dig in a little bit more for me, please, on the financial implications? You did mention it briefly, but I'm thinking in terms of, for example, extended learning day schools, extended, things like that. Just help me out with what the financial implications are that we could anticipate.
So we are compensating our members, our teachers in accordance with their standard salaries for the time the work closed. So if a teacher was performing in an extended learning school, they will continue to get that differential for the school that they are assigned to. And where we see, so we don't see a change or any additional costs. We may see a slight savings with some of our stipends that cannot be paid out for work that will not be done in the closure. But there are some responsibilities that we give teachers stipends that we are expecting the work to continue during this period. But there will be no, we don't see an additional cost based on the remote learning. But we are continuing to compensate our teachers based on their standard salaries for whatever school that they were serving in at the time of the closure.
Thank you. The reason I think this agreement is a good agreement is it provides a minimum level of teaching standard across the entire district that provides more clarity, in particular for parents and students on what to expect, and provides school leaders more guidance on how they can get their, their teaching teams working together and providing consistency. The biggest feedback we have heard is even within a school, this teacher is doing phenomenal work reaching out. And yet, another child in the same school may not hear from a teacher. So I think this provides a minimum expectation across the board. We all know that many, many teachers, the very vast majority are doing far and above and beyond these levels. But to at least have consistency for parents and what a minimum standard is, I think is very helpful. So thank you for your work on this, both to you and to you, Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Neil. We'll go next to Dr. Rivera.
Hi, yes, so again, thank you so much for your work on this. This is a question that I actually asked yesterday, but I really liked what Dr. Casalias said in response, which is related to what Mr. O'Neil mentioned around, you know, there's been teachers, some teachers been more active than others or more engaged than others. And the fact that the performance evaluations will be on hold or on pause during this time, understandably. But if you could say a little more about accountability, though, and, because that, that was also a concern I had about how, how we're going to make, you know, sort of have all teachers engaged, including physical ed and arts, you know? How are we going to, you know, check in with making sure that all the teachers in a school are engaged with the students?
Yes, so that's a great question, Dr. Rivera, and I appreciate you raising it again. You know, I think that this is the big thing that we just heard. You know, and here often is the experiences varied throughout the district. And so one of the reasons we have this agreement and why we fought so hard was to be able to say that we had three hours of synchronous time and an hour of asynchronous time, meaning, you know, four hours total that teachers would be during the school day working on the instructional preparation or direct instruction with students or peer-to-peer sharing of best practices through their professional development or working with their school leaders. This can be done, you know, one-to-one with a student and small groups with a student or for a whole classroom of students. And so there's varied ways that, that we know our teachers are going to be interacting with students around their work. We're going to be on the backend collecting data. And so we'll be sharing that data out. We've already provided some of that to our Equity Roundtable with, you know, just kind of looking at some really simple data. But we do think this will become more robust in the type of way that we give out data over the next weeks as we begin to understand better who is and who is not participating and had the opportunity or an equal opportunity to the educational materials and the engaging in them, whether it's signing onto their Google Classroom or signing onto Clever, whether it's taking attendance. And, and then these master schedules that we're expecting our principals and our school leaders to have as they monitor and do their work of monitoring, almost like classroom walkthroughs when you're in a, a real school building. So those are the ways that we are going to be holding our staff accountable to, to these agreements. And our school leaders will be helping us with that in the remote learning. And more of that will become evident when we show you the remote learning plan and provide for you some early data on what we're seeing.
Looks like you're all set, Dr. Rivera, and thank you for your question. Looks like Vice Chair Oliver Davila has a comment.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't, I can't find the raise your hand thing. I just, I said this yesterday, it's a comment more than a question, but please feel free to respond. I think, just making sure that our families understand what this means, synchronous, asynchronous, I mean, unless you're in this conversation and you're like, what does that mean? So I would just say, if we can communicate with students and families very specifically what this means for them and how this actually rolls out in their day-to-day life, I think will just be really, really important so that, you know, we, we, so that families know exactly what the expectations and, and students as well. So I just wanted to say, I think I said that yesterday, but I think it's really important, especially during this time when families are just, you know, many of our families are just trying to get by. There's a lot of challenges right now. And so I think we just want to be really sensitive and share exactly what, what this means. But I, I also just want to say, you know, that I think, based on my understanding, that this is an agreement that is, is very good when we look across the country. So I do want to say thank you to all the people that worked on this, the BTU and the superintendent and the superintendent's team. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair.
I just want to thank you for those comments, and it's a good reminder. And that's why we built in the student support team process as well, so that we could personalize. It gets back to Ms. Robinson's question earlier, you know, how are you going to adjust for families and based on what they need and what they can actually do right now? I mean, a lot of families, you know, are just trying to get by. And so we are, we are cognizant of that. And school leaders will be able to adjust with that, with these learning plans and these success plans that they're going to be working up and individualized for each and every family and child who is having difficulty.
Very good. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you once again, Vice Chair. I see Mr. O'Neil has his hand raised again. his hand raised again, but I want to go first to Mr. Tran, who had a quick comment, and then we'll return to Mr. O'Neil and anyone else that wanted to add anything additional. Mr. Tran.
Hi, this is more or less just a, an appeal. I have raised the same issue yesterday, and I, I know that what I'm, I'm going to say may be in the purview of personnel issues, but I'm just hoping that, that, that I can appeal to the superintendent as well as the Office of, of, the Office that deals with students with disability. There are parents that are struggling and, and the parents with, children with disabilities, struggle even more, you know, in this time of public health calamity. I'm calling on the Office of a student with disability to provide special ed teachers and teachers that are dealing with, with students with disability, extra resources, maybe individual assistance, so that those teachers can work together with the parents, because I have heard from many parents, as a matter of fact, that are dealing with issues of having their children with disabilities who are now at home and, and, and could not actually learn or, as a matter of fact, take any kind of instruction through the remote system. So I'm, I'm just advocating for extra resources in terms of personnel in, in helping those teachers so that the students with disability can be better assisted during this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tran. And Dr. Caselli, she spoke a little bit about the provisions in the MOU yesterday with regard to parents and the work that they do, as well as our coordinators of special education, the COSIS, and the work that they're continuing to be obligated to perform. And maybe you can describe that a little bit more and expand on Mr. Hassan as well.
Yeah, so thank you so much for bringing that up, Mr. Tran. I tell you, when I get asked what keeps you up at night, it's this very fact that we have several students who we know are regressing because they need the one-to-one, right? We know that, that they're having difficulty and that families are, are having difficulty because of the shelter in old order. We're unable to provide those face-to-face interactions with our kids. And the minute that we can, we will, because we know that it's really important for their development and for their growth and for their later independence in life. So just know that that's a strong value and priority of ours, and we've had that friend of mine, and we'll continue to work with our IEP teams, our COSIS, like the chair said, and our therapists that we have. I know they are doing telehealth. They're doing some virtual OT and PT supports to families. And I think, again, this gets to what I was saying before about the individualized personal nature of one-to-one that it's going to take in this type of environment for our students. That's going to take teachers getting used to that new style and our school leaders getting used to that new style, because they're used to teaching to a whole group of kids, and we need to adjust to one-to-one. And I got to say, in my thirty-two years of being an educator and turning around schools, I've never seen the achievement gap closed unless it was a one-to-one personalized type of situation. And so we have the opportunity now to learn from one another, to build on our best practices, and then to continue to resource those the way that we need to in order to get our kids what, what, what they need. So I really much appreciate that, that reminder and, and that value that you hold. We hold the similar.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Tran. We'll go back to Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is more of a follow-on question to the conversation between Vice Chair Oliver Davila and Superintendent Casilius about the evaluation issue. And Superintendent, it really makes me think when we tie this to this MOU and the guidance with the state and the work that you and your team are already doing, you're kind of marrying the three together and coming out with the new remote learning where we're trying to move our students forward. The past couple of weeks have been more solving the issues, getting them technology, getting them used to it, trying to maintain a level of learning, but now we're trying to move them forward. And to me, it really begs the key question of, as a board member, I'm curious, how are we going to know if our students are moving forward? How are you building in a plan on that? And, and, and if you'd rather have that conversation when we have a conversation about remote learning, since we're talking about the MOU now, it's just, to me, as a board member, that is, you know, the level I think we should be at in asking you, how are we going to know? And how are we going to know if they're not?
Yeah, so, you know, it's basic good teaching and learning, which is what we're going to be engaged in now that we know we're going to be all year. And so that's how we'll know is because we're going to assess for learning. And so we know that we have these prerequisite standards that the, the commissioner put out on Friday night. So we are going to be working with our school leaders and our teachers around these standards. We plan on developing ways to assess learning, both before and after the instruction of the standards and providing regular assessments. And so we will be doing that, and we'll be able to report that out. And we also know, because we'll be monitoring their individual plans for students who are struggling the most, we say these are our tier-two and tier-three students who we know are having some sort of struggle, either they weren't learning it, or maybe they have something going on at the family and they need these additional supports, and we'll do our best to put those in place however we can. But I think the most important thing is what you said at the very beginning, and that is that we are aligning the work so that it makes sense. We will have parent-friendly documents, too, but we are lining the work so it makes sense for people. I know that little pieces have been leaking out, so when the whole comes out, I think people will understand why we did it this way, which is aligning standards, having assessments, then doing intervention, and holding our SST teams and supporting and rallying around individual students, and then reporting it out to our stakeholders. That's, that's what we should be doing. And so we're building a really strong foundation for moving forward, because if we are in this longer, and I do anticipate that we will be in this potentially longer, or we may have intermittent times where we have to shut down a school or multiple schools or the whole district, you just don't know, but we're preparing for all of it, right? You want to be ready. We don't want to have to redo all of this again. We want to have strong, high-quality plans in place, so we never have to, don't miss a beat for our kids ever again. And so these practices, I think, are going to be carried into our new normal in the future regardless. So thanks for the question.
Are you comfortable this MOU puts you in a position to, to do that?
I actually think our MOU is better than a lot of others that we saw around the three hours of time that teachers will be, you know, required to spend with students or in synchronous time, depending on what the master schedule is that the, that the principal has put together with input from the teacher. I think that that puts us in a really strong position. And one thing we didn't talk about is if there's a case where we need a teacher to work up to their duty hours, we also have that in our MOU. So, you know, where there's some flexibility, and I want to thank the BTU for allowing us that flexibility to meet our students' needs.
And to the average person who's not quite up on educational jargon, synchronous, is it best to describe it as student-facing time?
Mostly it's student-facing, but there may be incidents where we have teachers who are, you know, maybe a teacher creates a video on a weekend, right, and she uses, she exchanges time with that, and the students engage with the, a video, and then they are facilitating that video, and it's not necessarily instruction that she's actually giving at that exact time, but it's interfacing with other human beings. So synchronous is really meaning that you're interfacing with other people, either teachers, other professionals, or you're interfacing with students, either through Zoom, through the other technology means like telephone or other ways.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you again, Mr. O'Neil, and thank you for that additional explanation, Dr. Casilius. Let's go next to Ms. Robinson, and then Ms. Reyes after that.
Right. Yes, thank you. Um, I was wondering with this, because nowhere in here do we really mention parent engagement. And I was wondering, particularly as we're about to go into new learning and new material, is there an opportunity for teachers to have a parent conference? Not, I know that they're doing a lot of parent communication right now in terms of the logistics of getting the work done, but a moment of reflection to give parents feedback on where their kids are now and how they might be able to fine-tune what they're doing or where to encourage additional work if it's not happening, so that we're not waiting till the end of the year. But this feels like it's about, we're about to turn the page to the next mode of this work. So to be able to give parents some feedback, so that you can make the most out of this last period of the year.
Yeah, I mean, parents are our partners now. I mean, I, I wrote a, a opinion piece about that.
Yeah.
You know, we always say kind of flippantly, oh, yeah, parents are a child's first teacher, but they really aren't. And so I have a healthy respect for them and what they're doing, and I can't thank them enough for being such good partners to help us with the continuity of the students' learning at this time. So I'm asking all parents to, for sure, reach out to their teachers and to regularly connect with them. I know it's a lot, and they're balancing a lot, but this is really important for the children. You know, I often say children don't get a rewind. You know, they only get this one opportunity at their education, and so we have to get it right. And unfortunately, they've been thrown into this situation at no, you know, nothing that they did, right? And so I, I plan on having a lot more, as we grow, resources available for parents. Right now, it's been getting them food, getting them connected, you know, trying to find some of them, you know, and then understand better their needs and get, get them what they need. And then Monica Roberts has been working on more of the parent advancement side, and we certainly can come back with more in-depth reporting on what her team is doing as well. She sent me some notes today on what they're doing, but I think they're doing a lot, and it probably is a better time for us to come with a much larger presentation around how we want to think about family engagement in the future and how we can actually capture this moment to really learn what this connectedness does. I mean, we have, I think, a hundred and twenty people on this call, and I don't think we always have a hundred people in the chamber. And so I think, you know, being able to be connected to our parents is really a great opportunity for us, but we also want to be respectful of parents and their time as well. So I'll, I'll ask Monica, and if the chair wants, we can certainly come back and present on what we're doing around family engagement and how this opportunity may help us to work with our parents better.
Thank you.
And I may have left it out of my highlights, but we did include family communication and parent communication expressly in a number of provisions in the MOU, just because we really did want to emphasize the importance of keeping families engaged as well as the students.
And of course, part of that is also progress reporting. So, you know, we'll be doing progress reporting out to families on how their child's doing and grades and that sort of thing still.
Very good. Thank you again for the question, Ms. Robinson. And as the superintendent noted, I think it would be great. I know we, we heard from other members, including the Vice Chair, on the value of parent and family engagement as part of the rollout for this remote learning process. And as we await the district to come back at our next meeting to speak more about remote learning, I'd certainly hope that, that family engagement piece would be part of that presentation. So we do have one further comment from Ms. Reyes, our student rep.
Thank you. I was wondering two things. First, sort of what, if the expectation is for teachers to log the hours that they're doing, or how they will keep record of those hours on their end?
So I guess first, congratulations on Columbia. I know Chairperson LaCanto mentioned the feeling of jealousy amongst the committee. I also am a little jealous that I'm not the one going off to Columbia in the fall, so enjoy it and make the most of it. In terms of logging hours, so I think it's kind of a twofold approach to, to monitoring the hours of the teachers. First, the school leaders are going to be designing schedules for student learning that will include the responsibilities of the teachers throughout the day and throughout the week. That's so, one, to keep it, to keep oversight of it, but also to make sure that teachers aren't conflicting with each other's schedules, so that, you know, two Zooms at the same time. So there will be that type of oversight and monitoring of their hours, but there's also the fact that when we use all this technology, there's almost a digital footprint in everything that people are doing. So, you know, if we get a report that a teacher hasn't been living up to the expectations, it'll be pretty easy to go back and check what they're doing for office hours, do their computer, what up, what they're uploading for programs and plans, lesson plans, videos, all of that. There should, it should be, like I said, a digital footprint of almost everything you do through the computer, so.
Okay, thank you. And I'm also curious about what the consequences setting clearer guidelines for teachers will be on student time. And I guess creating a master schedule sort of partly addresses that, but I'm wondering about extra work that teachers may be assigning, or, you know, what, what the consequence of assigning these guidelines to teachers will be on, on students and their learning time?
Um, I'm trying to understand your question, Evelyn. Can you say it again?
Well, I suppose.
Do you mean like if teachers give you seven hours of time on the computer, seven hours of screen time, what the consequences will be if they do that?
Um, more or less, but I think more along the lines of if we're expecting teachers to sort of be interacting with students and/or doing things related to student instruction for fifteen hours out of the week, how will that balance out on the side of students? Like, how will we be able to make sure that we can get to all of our classes and that sort of thing? Or like, is there a measure in place to address that?
So we've asked school leaders to make a school schedule for students so that they can meet their standards, and they can meet their obligations, especially for seniors with graduation. And so we are planning on school leaders releasing those schedules for students. We have recommendations on number of screen time, but that doesn't mean that students might not have a lot of homework. So it is school by school, but we don't think it's a good idea for students to spend more than half of what their normal day would be on the screen all day, because we also want them to be doing other activities and connectedness with peers, and then have time to actually do your homework when you get homework. So, and we know, you know, I've listened to BSAC on that. So when the remote learning guidance comes out, they'll have that, and their school leaders are the ones who will define those expectations, communicate those expectations to their school communities, and then hold their teachers accountable for it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Reyes. Are there further questions or comments for the superintendent before we move on, or for Mr. Hassan? Looking around, I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak, and I thank everyone once again for making time, of course, to discuss this important issue with the district in an executive session yesterday, as well as thanks to the superintendent, to Mr. Hassan, to Ms., Ms. Post, and the entire team that worked diligently over the last month plus to get this agreement off the ground and paved the way for remote learning going forward. Thank you once more to the BTU. I understand the BTU is going, is, is all set to go on this MOU, and we will take a vote on it just a short time later in this meeting. And we will return to that shortly. So thank you once again. We're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is a resolution in support of increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K-12 education. At this time, I'd like to turn things over to my colleague, Mr. O'Neil, who as many of you know also serves as a member of the Executive Committee of the Council of Great City Schools. He's currently the chair-elect and will be assuming the, the chairman's role this summer, and has been working quite a bit with leadership in Washington to advocate for increased federal funding, not only for the Boston Public Schools, but, but for large urban districts and public K-12 education nationwide. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you. So to my fellow members, what we have in
Thank you. So to my fellow members, what we have in front of us is a draft resolution for us to consider advocating for more federal funding, federal support and stimulus funding for education as these variety of support and stimulus bills are going through Congress. Just by background, 62 of the 67 superintendents, including Superintendent Cassilius, that are members of the Council of Great City Schools, signed a letter this week from the superintendents that was sent. In fact, Ed Week, the National Education publication, had a front page article about it today that these large urban districts were requesting more funding. Specifically, the request is for $175 billion in education stabilization funds that would be distributed through the Title I formula. Also, a $13 billion increase for IDEA, a $12 billion increase in the regular Title I funding, a $2 billion for E-Rate, which allows internet access for students. And finally, some emergency infrastructure funding that would include school buildings. So the superintendent sent a letter to their, to the leaders of both the House and the Senate, a majority and minority on both sides. Because by reference, the CARES Act that was passed last month included 13.5 billion for schools. And that was really just to start during the last downturn in 2009, the Recovery Act, American Recovery Act, ARA, included $100 billion for schools, and then an additional $10 billion was done afterwards. So last time there was a downturn, the federal government provided $110 billion in additional funding for K-12 districts. This time, they've only provided 13.5. And quite frankly, the impact is potentially significantly worse than it was in 2009. The unknowns right now are what are going to happen to city funding and to state funding. They are all being decimated when you don't have stores open, when you don't have property being sold, when you don't have sales tax being generated. State, as city and state revenues collapse. And when they don't have revenue, they don't have income tax, et cetera, there are going to be tremendous amount of cutbacks going on at city and state levels. If you read the papers now, you see a number of city and states have already started to plan furloughs of 10, 20, 30% of their employees in various cities and states across the country. So with that in mind, the superintendents have sent a letter to the leaders of the House and the Senate on the majority and the minority side, based on a regular weekly call that the Council of Great City Schools facilitates for school board chairs. Chair LaCanto takes pride every week in a call with his peers across the country. It was suggested that school boards also consider a resolution. San Diego passed one last week, the San Diego Unified School Board passed one last week. The council worked with it and changed it to more of a generic resolution, making some of the requests that I just mentioned. The chair and some of the superintendent's team have taken that draft resolution from the council and personalized a bit more to some of the costs that Boston has already incurred. So for example, you see in the draft resolution, it talks about the fact that we are still paying all of our 10,000 employees, that we're putting out 300,000 meals, that we're putting out 30,000 Chromebooks, that the city and the district spent 5.1 million on Chromebooks already, that because of the food that we're putting out, some of which is not reimbursed, we're anticipating a $5 million deficit in that line item budget for this year. So there are a number of costs that the district has already incurred. And what we would like to do is, we have in front of us a draft resolution that both reflects the realities of what Boston has faced to date. It then talks about clearly what happens if school districts suffer, what the impact is to our students, how they fall behind in wages in their lifetime, how they fall behind in achievement gap even while in school, et cetera. And then from a solution as a specific ask for at least $175 billion in education stabilization funds, $13 billion for IDEA, $12 billion for Title I, $2 billion for E-Rates, and the emergency infrastructure that, to include school buildings. So it's proposed that we, as a school board, approve this resolution. And I anticipate that a very strong majority, if not a vast majority of council member district school boards are going to be considering a resolution like this within the next week to 10 days as well. I turn back to you, Mr. K.
Thank you very much for that expansive background, Mr. O'Neill. Just for members, further reference and for the public as well, the district, the, the school committee doesn't typically get involved in, at this level of advocacy at the state and federal level, except in very limited and extraordinary circumstances. And for those of you that recall, we were involved recently at the state level on the Student Opportunity Act, as well as, as you recall, a few further years ago, the question too on expansion of charter schools. We took that action because it was in the interest of our district and more importantly, for the students in our district. And we've done the same thing at the federal level as well. As you recall, following Parkland, a few years ago, we took an initiative at the urging of our friends in BSAC to pass a resolution in support of stronger gun laws, particularly around and inside of schools. And so we have precedent here for taking action in extraordinary circumstances. And certainly, there, there's no more extraordinary circumstance than the one that's facing us right now as a district and as a nation, as a, as a, as a planet. And so we, we appreciate the work that the Council of Great City Schools are, is doing to advocate for increased federal funds, the work that they're doing with our, our nation's large urban superintendents, and the work that they are doing to coordinate a similar effort from school boards such as Boston. So I wanted to give you that further context for action before we open it up to further questions and comments from the committee. Mr. O'Neill, looks like you have one further item.
Yes, just one more quick point to make. We in Boston are actually blessed with a congressional delegation at both the House of Representatives and at the Senate level of people that who actually get this and are very supportive and push. And quite frankly, are positioned strongly even from the Massachusetts delegation to have Chairman Neal as chair of the Ways and Means Committee, as Chairman McGovern, McGovern as chair of the Rules Committee, to have Senator Warren on the Senate Health Committee, which covers education. We actually do have a delegation that is very sympathetic and pushes on this. And yet it is our responsibility as, you know, representing the district to make sure that the impact on our students is top of mind to our congressional delegation as they go through this.
Thank you once again, Ms. O'Neill. Are there questions or comments from the membership? Please virtually raise your hand, get my attention, or use any other means necessary. Well, it looks, I'm looking around at all the members, and it looks like there are no further questions or comments. You know, this is really a simple step for us, a no-brainer, if you will, to, to take this step and advocate for increased federal funding. As Mr. O'Neill aptly put it, we've got our nine congressional districts and our two senators, those 11 representatives in the delegation soundly behind us in support of public education in Massachusetts and across the country. And so we're, we're definitely in good shape on this one. But nevertheless, this effort puts us in lockstep with our, our brothers and sisters across the country. I do want to take a moment just to thank our friends in intergovernmental relations at City Hall and in the district for helping us to take what the Council of Great City Schools has suggested. I believe this was based on a template that was originally orchestrated and passed by the San Diego Unified School District in California. And we've, as Mr. O'Neill mentioned, Bostonized it. We've added quite a bit in the resolution to indicate that what, what steps we've been taking and is, as folks that might be following along, this is, resolution is posted on our website for your reference. We have expended a great amount of money with the purchase of Chromebooks, 20,000 new Chromebooks at the cost of $5.1 million, as well as the $5 million deficit that we're incurring to ensure that the feeding of all of our students and families continues unimpeded during this time. So we're doing our best and we want to make sure that we can make use of all available resources. So thank you once again, Mr. O'Neill, for your work on this and for urging our passage and getting this across the finish line. And we'll look forward to taking action in just a few minutes. Okay. Well, we're going to move on now to the action items portion of our, of our agenda. And this is moving back to our typical work where we'll take a vote, we'll consider and then take a vote on the grants for approval. And then we'll move on to the items that we've marked up for vote this evening. In addition to the three items that we just discussed of an urgent nature, we'll also be considering a number of items that were the subject of reports at our last school committee meeting. So I, this can get a little bit tedious for those of us that are participating as well as watching at home. I think we still have about, yep, 94 participants, down from about 160 earlier. So you hardly saw as you're in for a lot of yays and nays, hopefully more yays and nays. But we're going to move on now and move through our action items as expeditiously as possible. So as I mentioned, we're beginning first with our grants for approval, which total $175,363. I'll open it up to questions and comments from the committee and note that we do have staff available to answer any questions. Are there questions on the grants for approval? Looking around. Yes, Ms. Robinson?
Um, yes, I just have a quick one. I noticed even on this one, one of our grants, even though the time period is now, while we are not in, in school, the question is, are teachers able to provide the, the support or the work that's needed to be done in order for the grants to continue? I know, one, it didn't look like there had to be any, it was more of a training, you know, piece than it was direct service to students. So I'm, my assumption is if we are approving grants that would be taking place during these months, either that work would be able to be postponed till a time when you're back in session, or the work is able to be carried on remotely.
Yes. So for most of these grants, it is for work that can be continued on remotely. What we're also doing is we've been working with individual grantors to see where possible if we can get extensions on the grants. So we've had some success with that as well. One of the grants here, the BPS Moves Together, is a specific COVID-related donation for virtual PE program. But for the others, yes, so we're doing a combination of, can this work continue virtually? And if not, are we able to get some kind of an extension on the grant period?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Are there further questions or comments? Ms. Oliver Davila, please share.
I just wanted to say it's great to see the physical fitness grant in there, and that it's going to be on BNAN. And that actually, Brandy used to be my trainer, so she's great. I just want to say, I really, I really like that. I'm going to put my daughter, getting her to move is just, yeah, so it'll be really great.
Yes, that was a very generous donation from Crown Castle.
Other questions or comments, members? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented.
So moved.
Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Any discussion or objection to this motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll? And members, as a reminder, please unmute your, your microphones.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
And thank you for that thumbs up, Ms. Reyes, as well. We'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll move on to our next action item, which is the superintendent's request for interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds, which Ms. Giants presented on earlier this evening. As we noted earlier, this is an annual routine request. I believe we went through any necessary questions or comments earlier in the presentation, but I just wanted to take a quick moment to see if there are any further questions or comments from the committee. Looking around, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve this grant as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, excuse me. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to this motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you, once again, please call the roll.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan. And bear with me just for a second. I want to make sure I'm not missing something in my, my list of items to take a vote on. Nope, we're there. Okay, so pardon me for that interruption. Our next action item is the superintendent's final strategic plan. This item, as members in this committee and members of the public will note, has been an intensely iterative process and one that's been community-driven over a number of months and throughout this school year, really even reaching out back before the start of the school year when Dr. Cassilius first came on the scene and arrived in Boston. I want to first thank her for her work throughout this process and leading it, shepherding us to where we are today with this revised, or I shouldn't say revised, but updated strategic plan for the years 2020 to 2025. And also, Dr. Charles Grandson as well, who's joined us for the vote here. Dr. Grandson, as all of you know, is our chief equity and strategy officer, and has done truly tireless work in leading this collaborative process with stakeholders, both inside and outside the district. So at this time, I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer any further comments, as well as Dr. Grandson. And then we can move on to any final questions or comments from the committee before moving to a vote.
So thank you, Mr. Tran. Really a great day to be able to bring this final plan to you. It has been a work in progress for many, many, many months, and it is the community's plan. I think you will see reflected in the strategic plan, all of the voices and all of the themes that we saw in all of the engagement activities. There's teacher voice in this, there's family voice, there's partnerships had to play in this, in our commitments. And we really lifted up what they wanted to see as priorities within the district. I'm most proud of the fact that we focus, like Mr. Mudd said, on closing of opportunity and achievement gaps in this plan, and that we focus on accelerating learning and cultivating trust within the community. And I think that's, and then our commitment to amplifying voice. I'm just so excited about the commitments that are in here. They're just genuine. And I think they're genuine because they reflect what the community has said that they want as their priorities. So I can't thank Dr. Grandson enough. And I know Ava Mitchell, who has been supporting him in a consultant role quite a bit, as well as Monica Roberts and her entire team, who helped with the 100-day tour and all of the town halls and parent council engagement. There's just so many people to name who were part of the creation of this plan, including all of you for the hearings and the many times that you read it and gave us revisions and such thoughtful feedback. So I'm very proud of this plan. I think it is going to launch us into a new era. And we actually added a page on COVID in the plan. So as you read through it, you will see there's a page in COVID, and we have a commitment under every single one of our six commitments, which is a new thing that we which is a new thing that we added because we believe that even as this plan is in glossy and beautiful, as we give it to you, it is a living plan and it will be continued to be revisited. So with that, I'll give it over to Dr. Grandson.
Thanks, Dr. Cassellius, and thanks Chair LaCanto. And I just wanted, just quickly reiterate the great, the gratitude for members of the community who came together to make this plan what it is. And we look forward to moving ahead and doing the hardest part of the work, which is as Superintendent Cassellius said, you know, keeping it a living document. So thanks, everyone.
Thanks very much, Dr. Grandson. And thank you again for that summation, Dr. Cassellius. I want to go around and see if there are final questions or comments from the committee. Dr. Coleman?
Yes, this truly is a turn of force and it's very well done. And most importantly, you know, although we were looking, I think at one point for a more of a pithier, easier to describe project. I think as we grapple, as you grappled with the tough choice, you've created a comprehensive plan and program, which I think at the, at the end of the day is going to serve us much better than, than just focusing first with communication. So I appreciate the hard work that was done and the clarity, the emphasis both in this piece and then in the, the Opportunity Act that we'll discuss later. So there are really, so I, you know, I think I'm ready to vote for it. I think it's very good. There are two things, though, that I want to put on the table that as we go forward, I want us to kind of be clear about. And the one is, you know, I appreciate the data, the types of data that are being addressed in each one of the commitments. But what I would, what I'm going to want to find out and know, you know, fairly shortly is, are we, how are we going to really use that data? Are we going to be identifying progress? So we're going to increase by X percent each year. So it's going to be a progress metric measure on each of those? Or is it an outcome? Here is the bar that we're seeking to cross. So we know we'll good, we'll good when we get here. And I think, you know, I think either could work, but I would want us to be articulate about that. So that, that's one, one area that as we go forward in the work I want to address. And the other, and I don't think it's here, as you've heard me, as everyone's heard me say before, I'm one of the people who believes that it's the teacher in the classroom at the end of the day that counts when, you know, when they hold everything equal. It's that educator with our children who makes the biggest difference. And there's a lot of national, international data support that. And we need to organize to that moment. So what's not in the conversation today, the real explicit measure of teacher effectiveness, completely support, increasing the diversity and that. So everything we have there is very useful. But at one point, we have to know what competent teaching looks like, it acts like, it feels like. I think we need to be able to measure that, assess that in the worst sense of the word, grade it. And I think we at aggregate, I have no interest in individual teachers' grades, but in aggregate, see where we are. And we, I would encourage us to make that explicit as we go forward. Again, thank you for the huge amount of work and the community engagement and the sense that this is something we all own and that we're all responsible for. I think you all have done a magnificent job of getting us there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And I wanted to just pause for a moment to see if there was further response from the superintendent or Dr. Grandson.
Um, I would just mention, Dr. Coleman, that I think we'll be doing both, leading and legging indicators. I think that we have the opportunity now with COVID and all of the remote learning and all the data dashboards that we're doing to have, I think, what's going to become a much more useful measure and dashboards that we use regularly. And I think that there'll be dynamic and static measures for us to gauge our progress and set targets. And then also have out there really what are our ambitious stretch goals that we'll be doing. I do want to mention, and I know that Mr. Mudd talked about it in his comments, that, you know, our operational plan that we presented was really an overview for you to see what kinds of activities we'll be working on, but we will have deeper level plans at each of the departmental levels, as well as the quality school improvement plans. And those will all be based in equity. And we've had our, our school leaders start a new process around equity roundtables at their schools. And so not only do we have a district equity roundtable, we also have a new expectation for our schools around equity roundtable. And then we've also revised our equity toolkit and requiring our departments and our schools to use the equity toolkit. And I don't know if Dr. Grandson wants to speak to the process that we will be using to really deploy the strategic plan through the entire organization.
Absolutely. And so we launch right after, you know, if there's a successful vote tonight, we launch right into bringing together all members across central office to put together departmental work plans, as the superintendent mentioned. And that process is going to be a rigorous process that really starts with looking at what are the things that aren't aligned with strategic plan that we need to stop doing? And making sure that we're all clear and on the same page about how we move forward in a way that's about coherence and alignment to this plan. There really is a reflection of the values of the community and a number of different stakeholders. And, and from there, as we build those work plans, the, the great thing about what the superintendent has done in merging our equity work with our strategy work is we'll then be partnering with the Opportunity Gaps Office to make sure that those goals that are, that come from our opportunity achievement gaps policy are aligned with the work that we're doing and with departmental work plans. So that work will start to come together and roll out into the summer so that we can provide schools with support around their school quality school plans. And so that we're trying to, we can see the through line directly from the strategic plan to the district operational plan, to departmental work plans, and then quality school plans. And we are ambitious to hope, we hope to get that down even to, you know, the individualized learning plans that students will have. And so we strive for congruence and alignment and implementation.
Thank you again, oh, Dr. Coleman. You look like you have.
Thank you. Very exciting work and groundbreaking and leading, leading the nation in this type of conversation to have it so well integrated. And so I don't want anything to suggest that I'm not enthusiastic about the progress that, that we're making as a community. And I just want to, do want to put one more point on the table that I think that as we go forward, conversation that is growing and is implicit in a lot of the things we're doing is this issue of what autonomy, autonomy now means in Boston. And I just, I don't want to, I don't want to drift into a new approach. It's at one point, not, not this semester, not this school year, but certainly as the next year's school year starts, to really have some explicit conversations about how Boston thinks about autonomy and what we were gaining with increased coherence and commonality across schools. And as opposed to a historical perspective that said that it was the autonomous schools that were doing the best for our children. So I would argue that we need to bring that explicit going forward and not drift from that. Cause I think there, there's a lot of perspectives around the community that I think we want to bring in alignment for, so we can maintain a coherent approach. But thank you again for your.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I do want to remind members that, you know, we did have the DESI review, who really called out some of the autonomies and the need for the work around autonomous schools, given they are a large proportion of our transformation goals. And so this is an issue on our DESI MOU for one of the things that we need to negotiate over the next 60 days is how we are going to develop a new model for earned, earned autonomy is how it's stated.
Yeah, I think that the conversation for earned autonomy is something that we've, the 12 years I've been around the district has been a conversation. We've been looking for coherence around that, but I don't want to, and I'm not, I'm not sure I agree with everything in the DESI report. So that is, I think there's some issues in the way they constructed and use their data that I think is another conversation for it to have. And on the other hand, there's been large reports that have been accepted within the community that's autonomy that were the drivers of success. And I just think, you know, I understand, I understand the pressures and I understand where autonomy hasn't worked for a lot of communities. But we need to come to that as a group explicitly, make sure we're all on the, on the same page. Cause I'm not sure as a community, we, we are.
I would also like to note, Dr. Coleman, that in the strategic plan, there are a number of places where we talk about the opportunity achievement gap, but we measure it with MCAS. And so without the administration of MCAS this year, we will have to determine how we measure that in the future. But we didn't change it here because it's a five-year plan and we fully expect that we will be able to measure it at some point in the future.
Members, I want to interject for a moment. I think this is a great conversation and one that I think we'll continue to have over a great many months and years to come as we continue to implement the strategic plan and the superintendent operationalizes that on many levels. But I do want to remind folks that we will have many other opportunities to have these conversations as well. This is an opportunity for us just to make a few final comments before we, we take a vote. So with that in mind, I will go next to Dr. Rivera. And then it looks like Ms., Mr. O'Neill, and then Vice Chair Oliver Davila.
Um, so again, thanks to everyone for all the hard work on the plan. And also I just have to say, I really love the way the publication looks. So some wonderful photographs in there. And so the design people, I'll give a shout out to them as well. I, I just, again, I know I, you've heard me say this many times, as well as being the co-chair of the English Learners Task Force, that we really would love to again, see more initiatives rolling out with the kind of, you know, flexibility we now have under the Look Act. And to really, you know, center our English learners. I think that was a phrase used by one of our testimonials earlier of how, you know, we keep that centered, that English learners are really, you know, becoming a majority in our district. And so what can we do specifically around also native language literacy and moving just, you know, we still need SEI programs, but you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunities around dual language and, and what other school districts in Massachusetts have been able to, to roll out since 2017. So I hope that that's something that we can really fast forward as, as we, you know, I know we're struggling with all these other issues right now. But again, that, you know, we keep our most vulnerable students' and minds, English learners, and especially English learners with disabilities. And how do we, you know, innovate with, with the kinds of things that we could potentially do under the Look Act? So thank you again.
Agreed. And I just want to really share that, you know, this is a huge value of ours, obviously in the district, our EOL learners. Over 50% of our students speaking multiple languages, it's very important. And our commitment to making sure that we do get the Look Act in our bilingual plan. And so I know that Dr. DeLaS Reyes is working with Andreas Reyes on this, on this plan. It's one of their top priorities.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know we're at the end of a long journey here that is now starting a much more important journey. So superintendent to you and to Dr. Grandson and to your entire team that has worked in this, my heartfelt congratulations both for the outcome of it, but also the process that you went through to get here. So those community group meetings were incredibly important. I still, my visual from this strategic plan is going to be those boards that you did or that you had done, that we all walked around and read, but they were, they informed your work. They, they proved to the community that you were actually listening and that you heard and that you acted because of it. And that was an important message for our community here when you came to the city. So thank you for that. I, I'm appreciative of the six things that you have focused in on. I recognize the work that goes on from here with an implementation plan, all the way down to various levels that Dr. Grandson just said. I have one piece of feedback on it. It is not going to stop me at all from supporting this wholeheartedly. I only bring it up because I think it is important and it's something I've mentioned several times. And that is, I think what we are measuring has to reflect as accurately as possible what the actual goals are in each of the six categories. I'm not necessarily sure that what we are measuring, for example, around teacher issues exactly align with what you were laying out as goals. And another example that, that jumps at me, and I thank you for putting in about customer service. I know I have harped about that. I think it is very important. I've seen in cities like Austin and others where when they verbalize customer service is important, that's something parents can get used to. They can understand. They may not understand synchronicity, synchronicity, like we talked about earlier tonight, but they understand a customer service mentality. And I'm not quite sure measuring a culture survey inside the bowling building truly measures customer service. But those are two minor points. I recognize we had a conversation about this a couple of weeks ago and I was digging in on some of the points about the implementation plan. As you reminded us, that is kind of your work. The strategic plan is the school committee's work. And so I'm making my comments about the strategic plan. But quite frankly, the solution for me is to not nitpick about this because I think we're at a point of let's get it done, let's move forward. It's, and I'm very supportive of the overall work. I do plan upon revisiting this when we have a committee conversation about your goals as we evaluate you as superintendent. At some point, we have to do it, right? And so, you know, school committees are designed to approve policy, hire a superintendent to implement the policy, approve a budget that allows you to reach that and then evaluate. And it would make sense for us to have the key evaluation goals be aligned with these six items on the strategic plan. And at that point, I think it's appropriate for us to have a conversation about what is it that we are measuring to truly reflect progress on the six goals that we collectively, the superintendent and the school committee have aligned with under the strategic plan. So I just wanted to make, I wanted to make that comment. And but in no way diminishing the enormous respect for, I have for both the process you went through and the outcome you came up with.
And I commit to really revisiting the measures. I think I was saying that with Dr. Coleman as well. So we can certainly come back to the measures at a later date when we know more firmly what the measures are now, now that I do believe we will actually be able to, now that we're connected to all of our families, be able to do a lot more surveying of our families on their, their impressions of our service to them.
That's great. Yeah, I. I'm such a firm believer and I've had a lot of experiences in my corporate life of you inspect what you expect. And so I just want to make sure that we're really firmly aligned in what we're measuring, that it's truly showing progress towards the goals that we want. But minor point, again, tremendous congratulations, both on the process you followed and the outcome that you have in front of us tonight. And I'm very supportive.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And just a further point on feedback on the operational plan. I've heard in recent days, as, as has the vice chair, from co-chairs in the EOL and OAG task forces about their desire to provide further feedback. And, you know, much is development of the strategic plan was an iterative process. So will the, the operate, 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 operationalization, that's a $5 word of the plan.
Still easier than synchronization.
Yeah. Asynchronous is something you have to practice, of course. But we'll, we'll look forward to that continued work with our task forces, who we greatly value in providing that pinpoint input on some of our most vulnerable groups. Ms. Robinson, you had a quick comment, then we're on to.
Yes, I, I just want to echo what my fellow members have said and just to say thank you to everyone that has worked so hard on this. to everyone that has worked so hard on this. It was a different world when this project got started. And I think that, you know, going through all of the meetings, et cetera, and everybody's input certainly made it a strong plan. But COVID has given us a new world. And so I'm hoping also as we move forward, that we will take the lessons learned to be able to incorporate into the work as it moves forward. Because I believe it's going to both enhance and change many of the things in the actions and the way that they can go forward. But I feel this plan is so strong, it gives us a wonderful roadmap. So we just have to get on that road and keep going, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Vice Chair Oliver Davila.
Thank you, Chair. I do want to echo everybody's comments on all the work. I was able to go to a few of the community gatherings. I know it was a lot of work for the superintendent and for all the staff and, and, and Dr. Grantson and everyone. And I don't think we should take lightly that you have been doing all this work as well as all emergency work that's happening. So all of the team, I think that's really extraordinary and I just want to say thank you. And hopefully, you know, everybody realizes the amount of work that's been happening, that we're still moving forward, even though we are, we're doing some, you know, emergency stuff. And that's really important to say. My comments are that I really appreciated seeing point number six around activating partnerships. I know that I talked about it early on. So being able to see it is great. And I think especially now when you look at like partnerships that have to do with some of the community organizations, the out-of-school time providers, never has that been more important than now. As we look at what the summer will look like, many of us have been running summer learning programs as part of the fifth quarter. And so being able to continue that work is never more important than now. Considering, you know, some and so many of our young people, you know, because of, you know, things that can't be helped in this pandemic, we need to make sure that we have, that people, that young people have the opportunity to catch up. So I really appreciate seeing the activate partnerships. I, I would just say two comments and they're going to come up later, but I'm just going to say them. I mean, I do support the plan. I just want to say the two things that I, that I want to spend a little more time talking about. And it doesn't have to be right at this moment because as the chair mentioned, you know, we'll be talking about the operational part. But I do want to say that the piece around redesigning secondary schools and the alignment with MasCor. So I've said this before, I'll say it again, that I do think that has to be a much more in-depth conversation. There can be many intended consequences around that. And it also requires a conversation around budget. For those schools that do not have all the pieces to have MasCor, we need to make sure that they actually have that, a budget to do so. I think the other piece is, you know, we have to understand what does it mean to say we're going to have MasCor on our graduation rates? And we want, we want to have high expectations. I absolutely agree with that. And at the same time, I wonder how much flexibility we have if a student is left behind in something. Does a headmaster, for example, have the authority to say, you know, instead of taking a pottery class, you know, they need to actually take a literacy class because they're not going to pass? And I think also, you know, schools will have to make tough choices around, you know, what, like now is a perfect example. Our students are having so many issues around mental health. And so if they have to choose between having a social worker or having somebody who's going to deliver, you know, an art class, like, so we, I think, again, we have to be really careful about that, looking at that. And, you know, I think the other thing that I, that I want to talk about later is like the, the seven to 12 piece. And what does that mean? And who's doing the seven to 12? And lastly, just, you know, the mention of alternative ed. Alternative ed is a huge, and not huge, it's a, it's a very important piece of our portfolio. And so I want to be very sensitive to, it's mentioned in there. I don't know, you know, we're not going deep right now. This is just an overall high-level look, but I, I would want to have more conversations again. I want to make sure, you know, there, that we look at, that we have deep discussions because there, again, can be many unintended consequences. So, but, you know, other, I, other than that, I'm just going to leave it at that because I know we'll have opportunities later. But those are things that stuck out to me. And I did what Dr. Rivera talked about also, like the Look Act piece of the ELL pieces. I do want to see those much more strengthened. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Sounds like we've made our way around the table. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's 2020 to 2025 strategic plan.
So moved.
Thank you. Dr. Coleman is your second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LoCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan. Folks can hang tight with us. We only have three more votes to go before we return to our, our last report. Our next action item is the District Student Opportunity Act Plan. And you will recall that the superintendent presented an overview of this, the District's Student Opportunity Act Plan as part of her strategic alignment presentation to the committee on April 15th, our last school committee meeting. I want to thank in particular Chief Accountability Officer Corey Harris for taking the lead on this process. And for folks that need a quick refresher, the Student Opportunity Act Plan is something that is required by the state as a condition of receiving Student Opportunity Act funds from the, the state following the legislature's passage of the revisions to chapter funding, excuse me, chapter 70 funding processes last year and the subsequent implementation by the governor. So at this time, I'd like to take a moment and ask the superintendent for any final comments from her and from her staff. And then we will move on to questions or comments from the committee. Superintendent, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, my computer died, so I had to go and quickly put this up back on my phone. So we were at the end of Ms. Oliver Davila's comments. What did I miss? I'm sorry. Are you taking the vote now on the strategic plan?
I'm sorry, I didn't know that you dropped off. We, we have taken the vote on the strategic plan. It passed. I wondered why I didn't hear a reaction.
You're probably like, where's the superintendent? But my computer completely died and then I was like, plugged it in and tried to put it back up on and it wouldn't go back on. So then I was like, okay, now I got to get on my phone. So anyways, thank you, everybody for, for this, your incredible hard work on the strategic plan. I just very much appreciate your support of me and of the team to, to deliver on that and, and the entire community. I think it will make everybody proud in the long run, so.
Well, thank you once again, Dr. Casellis and to Dr. Grantson as well for your work. I, in my haste to move through our, our votes, I neglected to pause and say thank you once again. So moving on to the businesses that's at hand, we're on to the Student Opportunity Act Plan that you presented on at the last meeting, Superintendent. And I gave a quick overview of why that plan is required by state law and how it fit into your strategic alignment plan, presentation that you provided at our last meeting and which incorporated the Student Opportunity Act Plan, the strategic plan, the operational plan that follows the strategic plan, and some of the work that went into informing how the district approached that memorandum of understanding with DESI, the DESI review. So I, there, there may, I'm not certain that there's anything further that you want to add at this time on the Student Opportunity Act Plan before we open it up to brief questions and comments from the committee prior to a vote.
No, I, I think it was pretty self-explanatory. You know, in the alignment, it's a very, very small amount of money. I mean, it's probably 1.8 million is a lot of money, but in the scheme of a $1.3 billion budget, it's small. So we really did try to identify the activities that we thought were going to help us, you know, move forward in a lot, in, in alignment with the strategic plan and what DESI was expecting in the MOU.
Very good. Members, are there further questions or comments? Dr. Coleman?
Great. Once again, as you say, it's very difficult. We're under a lot of pressure, you know. I just want to make some comment. I think that I'm very comfortable with everything. I wouldn't take anything out. I think it's well-focused in many ways. You know, I think I'm on record by saying I don't completely agree with all the fundamental premises that DESI is using to make their, their recommendations and requests. But I think, I think, I just want to make sure that's on the table and remembered. But I think there are a couple of things I want to, I think I, I would like to have added, not necessarily right away, but that I think there's an absence. One, the focus on AP and, and IB are great if our primary focus is for getting kids into selective, high selective schools. Everyone is moving towards getting into a traditional four-year college-oriented liberal arts college. AP, IB are critical for that. And so what, but what I see is an absence of alternatives, particularly, I wish we had some, I, I want us to also equally articulate where we're going with CTE, our career technical education and the work we're doing about Madison Park and the ways across the various districts around the committee, excuse me, schools around the district where I think if we're really going to close the achievement gap or really going to address the needs of our students going forward to have a focus around that first generation into employment, into ownership. And I think we need to reinvigorate that focus. So I don't know if anyone's been recent, there's a new biography out about William Trotter who really captures this balance between this kind of college orientation and the kind of the more frontline work. And where he really says is we have to do both. And I think, I think we do reorient towards what is CTE? And I think we need to put some resources and thinking about that, that's very important. So that's one thing that I'm going to vote for this, I'm going to support this. But as we go forward, I want, I want to put that on the table. The second piece is as we, as we go through the explicit plan, the real internet, the national challenge is you're really thinking about, in our professional development, we've talked appropriately about the need for more professional development, but kind of be an explicit plan, again, going back to how will we know when it's working? Because professional development is an international challenge, as we all know. And, and, and finding ways to be clear about that is very important. I want to go back, I'm going to repeat about, you know, the, are there process variables or outcome variables? I think we need to articulate that in one way or the other. And then the other one, the commitment number four, under partnerships, I think we need more information there, more, more explicit. I think some of them, you got a good sense of the commitment that the district has made in the other commitments, but that was, I would, I would, I, I found that a little bit thin and not, and understandably that it's a very complex conversation. But as we've said before, these partnerships are central to our progress. And so making that more explicit, not tomorrow, not next week, not next month. But these are things that as we go forward, particularly as we think about our next year, this more explicit statements about how, what are, what are our professional development? How we know it's going to be working well? And what do we want partnerships to be? What are our expectations? And how will we know we're getting what we want to have? But again, it's very good work. I know you're working and the very fact that you're able to give such a high-quality response to DESI in the middle of this crisis is remarkable and we appreciate it. And many people, even though the person spoke earlier about maybe we want to suspend for a year, I, I wouldn't hate that. But the fact you moved forward in a very articulate, wonderful way, I commend you. And these are the areas I think that will strengthen us as we go forward.
Great. I, I just want to clarify because I had, had my computer died. Whether we were talking about the MOU or the SOA, the Student Opportunity Act.
This is the Opportunity Act that was.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's, that's okay. That's a little different than the MOU, which we did align to the strategic plan as well. So, but yeah, and that's just the accounting of that $1.8 million and how we're going to use it in the future. And, and I was just saying that it was going to be aligned. But your comments about the DESI MOU are good ones. And I just, I just want to remind folks that DESI does hold us accountable for advanced coursework in the determinations that they give. And so we do need to increase the advanced coursework. We have 12 high schools that don't even offer any advanced placement courses. So doing a small investment in making sure teachers have the professional development for that is really important. And the way we would measure that is do students' outcomes in participating in advanced coursework actually improve? Do they score a three or four, you know, on their advanced placement tests? And do they actually earn college credit? And are they learning in, in those measures? So I think that that's really important. I do also look forward to giving the high school redesign presentation and having Dr. Bruegmann and Dr. McIntyre presenting on the Core Four, which is our first start in seven high schools to really look at improving the level of rigor in those high schools and redesigning those high schools. And I think that will address a lot of what you're talking about with the career pathways. I think you're going to see, we're going to be adding additional support at the district office for middle school career pathway work that we want to do to build up so that we can improve the pathway for our Madison Park students. And so I think you're going to see that become very evident in the next several weeks and, and decisions that we're making and in the presentation around high school redesign. So I look forward to asking, answering those questions. As finally, when it comes to professional development, teachers are evaluated. And we do evaluations of our professional development as well. And so we, next year in the budget, are investing in instructional facilitators in our 33 transformational schools. If this model is one that is very valuable, because that's a job embedded coaching model, our academic office is also going to be job embedded coaching model. And we will be able to use a process for our evaluation of teachers through those, those coaching models. So I just want you to know, we, we are addressing those and you'll hear more about them as we operationalize the strategic plan.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rivera, you have a question?
Um, yes, um, I, I know that we had, I had mentioned this before as well in terms of the growing our own teachers. And I, I do appreciate seeing that we want to, you know, increase our teacher diversity. But I noticed it was only mentioned historically, black colleges and universities. And that kind of was like, what? I mean, we are sitting here with the Latino, Latinx student population being the largest and Latinx communities in the region being the largest minority group as well as predictions that college, future college enrollments nationally, Latinx students will be the number one growing population. So I just, I will, I will vote yes, but I want to see again us really thinking more complexly about diversity. It's not, it can't just be also race. It also has to be linguistic diversity as well. And so how do we really elevate the actual needs in our district in terms of representation where it's multilingual, it's Latinx and Asian teachers that we, we really also need? We need black teachers too. But in terms of representation. But in terms of representation, we actually have Hispanic serving institutions in our backyard. We, at UMass Boston, for example, are minority serving, and Annapese, Asian American, Pacific Islander native, you know, native and Pacific Islander serving institutions. So yeah, I want to just, you know, throw that out there, that what we should really be, we're growing our own in the region, we need to really be tapping into our local Hispanic serving institutions and Annapese institutions. So if we could add that in there, or make that at least a goal moving forward, because I do think, you know, multilingual diversity is really what's going to be needed in the future. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Rivera. I just want to assure you that this is top of mind, not only because we are obligated through the guarantee order to have this be a top priority for us, but it is also a really big part of the strategic direction, and it's a big part of what we heard in the community. So that is, that is part of it. But for this SOA, it's such a small amount of money, you know, that this is really just telling the state, it's an accountability exercise to tell the state what we are doing with some of these resources, but there's a lot more effort that's going to be coming with the additional $100 million that the mayor invested, as well as there's some additional money that is going to be available with the DESI MOU. So not only is it in the strategic plan, it's in the SOA plan, and it's in the DESI MOU that we are going to be focusing on teacher diversity, and absolutely that means our Latinx teachers.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Rivera, Vice Chair.
Okay, I was going to say, Vice Chair, would you like to say something?
Thank you for ably taking over for a moment.
You were missed. Thank you. So I know you dropped off, your computer died in my last comment, so I'm going to reiterate them because they tie to this as well, which is my concern around the Mass Core piece, which I think, I believe we're going to have a deeper presentation at some point, and I feel like we really need to understand what we are getting to. It's.
I did hear those, Alex, just so you know. Yep. Not that you can't repeat them again, but I did hear that you had concerns around the alternative schools and just how much flexibility there would be in the Mass Core, and just a little bit of concern around that.
Yeah, the concern, the unintended consequences, the budget for it, you know, what does it mean for some students? Are we not going to graduate some students if they don't have art? Not everybody has a gym, so we need to have conversations. I know you were not here when, when previous headmasters came together and had a report on this, and they did not recommend it, but I really want to understand, you know, what we are walking into. I think just the other piece, and I, I know people have gone off the bend to talk about the DESI MOU and all that, so I'm going to do the same, and just say that I am concerned. I, I voted for the seven to 12 piece, and I still stand behind that. I guess my concern is looking at some of the seven to 12 schools that are already struggling and adding more to them, to some of those high schools, adding that, adding, you know, AP, adding IB, adding Mass Core. I'm just very worried. And so again, I think as we move into these conversations, we all need to understand what does that mean, and what we're asking schools to do, because if you're already a school that's struggling and adding all these other pieces, it just makes me very worried.
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you, Superintendent, for going back and retrieving the comments that the Vice Chair made on the last, on the last vote, excuse me. So if there's no further questions or comments from the membership, I will entertain a motion to approve the BPS Student Opportunity Act Plan as presented. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you, Superintendent, for talking through a little bit more of the nuances around the Student Opportunity Act Plan, and members for your questions and comments here. As has been a common thread throughout all of this conversation tonight, I think we'll be returning to these items quite a bit in coming months and years as we continue to measure and evaluate how different efforts within the strategic plan and all the other operations that flow from that are impacting learning within the district. So we'll look forward to continuing to discuss these issues as we move forward. Okay, two votes to go. Next action item is a memorandum of understanding between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union on Remote Learning, as presented to us early this evening by Mr. Hassan, as well as the presentation and discussion that the committee had in a session earlier this week. We did discuss this quite a bit earlier this evening, as well as yesterday, but I do want to pause for just any final questions or comments from the committee on this MOU. Looking around, it looks like there's no further questions or comments. And if that's the case, I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding on remote learning between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union as presented. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Sounds like a second from Dr. Coleman. Ms. Robinson, is there a, any discussion, excuse me, or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila? Ms. Oliver Davila?
She's on mute.
She may, she may have stepped away for a moment.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And I do want to just take a moment once again to thank the Superintendent and her team, as well as the Teachers Union in reaching this agreement with us. As we have discussed on a number of occasions in reference to the MOU, we're deeply appreciative of where this puts us at the front of the pack, both in, within the Commonwealth, as well as nationwide, with respect to obligating our teachers to synchronous learning, student-facing learning, and ensuring that we have our teachers ready to, to do the work until the job gets done, as we continue to implement remote learning within the district. So thank you once again to everyone for their efforts in that regard. All right, our final action in this evening is a resolution in support of increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K-12 education, which Mr. O'Neill presented earlier this evening. Given the time sensitive nature of this issue, and with the next school committee meeting not being held until May 13th, I thought it was important that the committee take action on this matter this evening, the same evening as the presentation. And as folks note, that's typically not our practice, but in such an urgent matter and trying, in an effort to call attention to our delegation to this urgent matter as quickly as possible, it's, this is a prudent measure. So thank you once again to Mr. O'Neill for his work in shepherding this process forward with the Council of Great City Schools, and thank you to the timely input from our Intergovernmental Affairs Office and our Finance Office to add information pertinent to Boston Public Schools. Our IGR colleagues will be taking this to our delegation in the morning, presuming that we vote in favor of the resolution that's now before us. So if there are, are there any final questions or comments from the committee on this resolution before we ask for a motion? We're just looking around, it looks like we had full conversation. Mr. O'Neill?
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out, it's also been pointed out to me this evening that it may be interesting as well for the council to also approach some of the national organizations that work with many of our districts. They also have national leadership that is tied in. You know, they have board of directors that can be influential, et cetera. So city, citizen schools, you name, a bunch of the national organizations that deal with a large number of these districts may be interested in joining on as well.
Thank you very much for noting that, Mr. O'Neill. I know City Year has been active in this space, and they, they do work closely with the AmeriCorps program that funds many of their members, and, you know, certainly that organization, as well as a number of the others that you, you mentioned have folks with deep experience and connections within the federal government. So, so that's a timely note, and thank you for that. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve, as presented, the school committee's resolution in support of increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K-12 education.
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Well, thank you again, Ms. Sullivan. Will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you once again to my fellow members for taking up this urgent measure, measure so quickly. I really appreciate the comradeship that we're exhibiting tonight with our colleagues all across the country in working towards increased federal funding for our schools during this time. We're all in it together, and it's through efforts like this that we can demonstrate that to our legislators and continue to work together for the common good, which is our nation's students. So we've made it through the votarama, so thank you, pat yourselves on the back. We are going to move on now to our final report this evening, which is a request for approval of a private school application for the Croft School. Now, as a reminder to members of the school committee, as well as those following us at home, the Massachusetts General Law is required that private schools wishing to open within a city or town's limits must first receive approval from their local school committee. So in this case, the Croft School is proposed for operation in the Jamaica Plain neighborhood of Boston, and so their proposal is coming to us tonight for consideration and a vote at our next school committee meeting. At this time, I'm going to invite our Chief Accountability Officer, Corey Harris, who has joined us on Zoom, as well as Mr. Scott Given, who is the Croft School founder, to present their report. Mr. Harris, Mr. Given, please proceed.
All right. Is the presentation showing?
It is, but it's not full, full screen.
Okay.
There you go. Looks great.
Perfect. Thank you. Chairperson LaCanto, school committee members, Superintendent Casillas, listening audience, thank you for the, the time this evening. As Chairperson LaCanto mentioned, I'll be presenting with Scott Given, who was one of the founders. We received application for the Croft School, and we're here to discuss that with you. As Chairperson LaCanto mentioned, Mass General Law requires that we evaluate this application, and then in 2011, Boston School Committee set a process by which we would evaluate the application. That process requires the Chief Accountability Officer or designee, along with the representative from the Office of Academics, as well as a school leader with a similar grade structure as the applicant participate in the review committee. So that committee has done its due diligence in evaluating the application for the Croft School, and we recommend approval to the Boston School Committee. The key steps in the process were as follows. We received application in early January. I had a meeting with both of the school founders in early January to better understand their philosophy and their approach towards opening the school and making sure they understood the entire process of approval. We put, I put together a review team in a timeline to complete the process in February, convened the central office team in April, and we completed the evaluation process, and we made a recommendation for approval to the superintendent, who's appointing me as designee to make that recommendation to school committee. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Given, so that he can give you more specifics on the school.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Thank you, everybody, for hearing our proposal. The Croft School is proposed as a new private school to be located just on the Jamaica Plain Rosendale line, near Forest Hills T Station. The school is named actually after my high school history teacher and track coach, Mr. Hal Croft. The school will be located at 3815 Washington Street, which is the site of former Harvest Grocery Mart, which went out of business within the last couple of years. We're, we're right near the end of a $2 million renovation project on that building. It's about 90% complete, and we're on pause until construction can resume in the city. We're intending to open our school with 40 students, 20 of those students in a K1 classroom, and 20 students in a K2 kindergarten classroom. And then the school would add one grade level each year until we would become a full 160 student, K1 through grade six school. We're intending to create a school that is high quality and diverse. We've been really thrilled by the level of interest from families across the city, and we're excited to add another option to the many high-quality options that exist in Boston right now for elementary school. As noted on this slide, we filled 95% of our seats. 55% of our students identify as students of color. We're very fortunate to have a significant amount of financial aid available, and 45% of students qualify for financial support, up to and including full scholarships, and 95% of our students reside in the city of Boston, from JP, from Rosendale, from Hyde Park, and a few students from Roxbury, Dorchester, and West Roxbury each. The question has come up whether we would be, whether our students and families would be relying on any Boston Public Schools transportation in our early years, and we've sent out a survey to our enrolled families to ask them, and none of our enrolled families at this point intend to use Boston Public Schools transportation in the 2020, 2021 school year. Just very basically about the program itself, we think of our school model as having five components, includes, including indoor and outdoor play, hands-on, project-based learning, 10 student enrichment classes, which happen twice daily, trips throughout the city of Boston every Friday, and then our core curricula is delivered in a workshop model, and as noted on the slide here, we use a combination of Lucy Hawkins and foundations, Wilson Foundations, you know, the English Language Arts Program, and a combination of investigations and Singapore math in our mathematics program. And if approved, my own two sons will be to the school students when it opens next year.
That concludes our presentation, and we will entertain any questions.
Sorry, I muted myself. Thank you, Mr. Given. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Given, it's nice to see you back. I know we you're well-known to the committee and to the Boston community with your former work with UP Academy. I want to open up now to the committee for questions and discussion. If folks can virtually raise their hand or make a note in the chat box or otherwise just wave at me, I'd be happy to call on you. Looks like Ms. Rivera, Dr. Rivera, excuse me, raised her hand. Let's start with you, and then we'll go to Ms. Robinson. And then, Mr. Coleman, Dr. Coleman, excuse me. I'm having trouble with my titles tonight.
Yeah, so no, I live I live just within walking distance of the proposed new school. My son went to the Sumner School here, and there's a very strong Rosendale pathways of our our small schools here. I'm worried about how this is going to infect the enrollments in some of the Rosendale schools. Like, do we need another school in Rosendale, or is this really mostly going to service Jamaica Plain privileged families? Sorry to put it that way, but that's a concern that I have.
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate that question very much, certainly. And I think, you know, my work in the district goes back a ways, and and kind of the core commitment of the school and opening up has been to create a really diverse school among our faculty and among our student body as well. We've worked exceptionally hard over the last eight to nine months or so to ensure that we're providing access to families from all over the city, across different neighborhoods, and including to families who may, for whatever reasons, be interested in a private option, but who for whom did not think that would be financially feasible previously. And, you know, we have really, it's there are 20 students in each grade level in our school, and and, you know, the way that plays out is a handful of students from each neighborhood in the school each each year.
If I could just follow up.
Something to follow up on?
Yeah, no, I just I still want to know how this could pretend, because, you know, we've lost in the district so many of our kids and seats to charter schools. How is this going to affect the enrollments in our BPS schools? That's that's really what I I'm really concerned about.
Sure. So so one, you know, one data point that I can provide is, so we, you know, I I have roots in Boston, and and Boston is kind of close to my heart, which is why we're excited to open the school in Boston. We, you know, we opened a similar school in Providence two years ago, same size. And what we saw is there about a third of our students who have enrolled there. Otherwise, we asked families, you know, once they enroll, where would you have enrolled if the Croft School didn't exist? And about a third of our families say they would have enrolled in their, you know, local public school or another public school or charter school in the district. About a third of those families say they would have tried to find another lower-cost private school option, such as a Catholic school or Montessori-type school, and a third of our families say we were, you know, intending to enroll in a kind of more elite, high-priced private school, but when we realized this is a great option at, you know, more than half, less than half the price for tuition, this is the school we decided. So I can't kind of, of course, like, project right now exactly, you know, who our student body will be over time. But I think to to answer your question, that's kind of the data points we have. We also have a lot of families which we're excited about who've said, this is a school that, you know, really keeps us in the city for the long term, and that's kind of the many options they were considering as to kind of where to go and where to move if they were going to move, like, the idea of staying put in the city, which is what they've wanted to do, and enrolling in Croft is exciting for them.
Dr. Rivera, did you have further questions at this time?
I I mean, I still, I guess we don't know, but I I I I think what we could guess is that there are going to be some of our Boston Public Schools students that will end up going to this school at some point. And so it raises the same concerns I have about the charter school expansion, and and I have some strong feelings about that, but, you know, just facing these concerns about equity. Who will, you know, how will, again, this is a, there's going to be tuition, so it's there's already going to be equity issues there. So, yeah, just just needed to raise those those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. We'll go on now to Ms. Robinson.
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. Actually, I drove past today exactly where the school is going to be on my way to another meeting. I had two questions following up a little bit on what Dr. Rivera was speaking to, but my questions are, where does the funding come from the school and and why a school now? What was the motivation for creating the school at this moment in time?
Sure. So the second question I can answer quite easily, it's because I have two young boys. They're three and five, and kind of my dream had been to create a school which they could attend, and I'm excited that if, you know, if the school is approved, they would be able to do that. So it's very, this is cool, very, very driven by kind of from my own family and me, kind of what we were excited about in a school, and it seems like that kind of hope and vision has resonated with a number of other families across the city as well. So that's exciting. In terms of the funding, a couple of things. So one, I in my kind of prior professional life, led a nonprofit organization and was connected to various individuals and foundations across the city, and those individuals have been very generous in supporting our endeavor in getting a school going, including its scholarship fund. And then for my own family as well, we've put a number of our own resources towards the school.
Yeah. And who will the teachers be?
Great. So we have hired 11 of our 12 teachers right now and for the starting kind of year of the school. It is a wonderfully experienced, talented, and diverse group. So our more than 50% of our teachers will be teachers of color, including with different linguistic backgrounds, and then, among other staff members, a similar percentage of staff members of color. And they have come from, you know, one has come from a preschool in the area, another has come from a public school just outside of the city of Boston, another has come from a charter school within the city of Boston. So a variety of different experiences. Our head of school, Peter Ciparone, he is most recently an assistant principal at a diverse public school in the city of Brookline.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. We'll move on now to Dr. Coleman.
Great. Thank you. I'm very excited. I appreciate the questions that my colleagues have have answered and 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 I think the future. I was surprised. I didn't I don't know whether I missed other materials, but I didn't get a sense of really what the school curriculum was be. I had some topical headings, but I didn't have any. Was there a more in-depth application about the financing, the faculty, and what the curriculum would look like and act like? Or did that was that did I miss that, or did this go through the the internal review, and then just a summary was given to us?
Yeah, so the the process is, it goes through this general review process. There's a rubric that we use, and then we bring this information to school committee. We're more than happy to share all of the materials and rubrics that were used in order to get to the recommendation.
Yeah, it's my memory correctly, or I mean, Mr. O'Neal probably has a better memory than I do, than other, like, when we had charter schools, etc. We get more material about what's really in what we're really approving, and so I think I would appreciate just a little more, you know, more data than I have, but that so that that very helps me clarify that I didn't miss something, which is would be something that happens to me.
We'll share the entire folder.
Great. That'd be wonderful. Thank you. And then, and I do think the whole, the we the need to track what will be the impact on the enrollment of the schools for whom we're directly responsible as we as we bring other schools into our ecology is an important thing that we need to track.
Thank you very much, Dr. Coleman, and, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Harris, for opining on the further materials that are available. I am looking back at the the first slide in your presentation that references our school committee policy dating back to 2011, which lays out the expectations for these reviews, and that includes an application process, a site visit, and then a recommendation from the superintendent about whether to approve the application. So I think in addition to sharing with us those materials, including specifically the report of the visit, the site visit committee, it would be helpful for us to have that resolution as well as a refresher. Mr. Harris, you might have that at your fingertips. You can provide, and if not, I'm sure Ms. Sullivan can find that for us and distribute it to the committee. We're on now to Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation tonight. Mr. Given, nice to see you again, as always. Some of the newer members of the committee may not be as familiar with you, but as the chair noted, you were the former CEO of UP, which is a partner with the with the city, with the district, and several of our schools. So we have had you've had a long relationship with Boston Public Schools, and not surprised you created a new school because you are very entrepreneurial and creative in your endeavors, but you have always done it with the spirit of partnership as well. So I do want to point that out to my fellow members, and I understand the concerns being raised because I I, as my fellow members know, I always think in terms of market share, and I hate the potential of of losing students elsewhere, but, Mr. Chair, it may be helpful, again, as part of that refresher that you mentioned of the 2011 policy, to have legal counsel also just share with us, because this is a very particular provision of state law that we approve private schools in our district, but I believe we are only approving that the district itself has looked at it with regards to curriculum and that type of thing. We're not allowed to say, no, we don't want that type of school. You know, we don't want, we have religious schools come before us all the time. We have schools by certain cultures, such as the British school, the the French school, etc. And so I think we're not allowed to get into, no, we don't want them as competition. We focus on the district review is all around, are they going to provide an adequate curriculum for the student that they're going to be serving? I I believe that's the framework that we're supposed to be following, and Mr. Harris, you may you may have looked at that and therefore how you arrived at the recommendation, but I think finding out some of that background information, both the application and what the findings were from the site visit, would help us inform the recommendation that you were making, and then, Mr. Chair, if we could just get some clarification on what we are supposed to be looking at and what we're not. Because like my fellow members, I get concerned about equity. I get concerned about transportation. I get concerned about, are we is this going to be competition? It is not taking dollars from us, because ironically, we actually don't approve charter schools in the city that is approved at the state level.
Right.
So it just some some further guidance on that, because it's it's few and far in between when we actually have these come before us. So for us to be clear on what we are supposed to be looking at, what we know, it would be helpful.
Yes, thank you, Mr. O'Neal, and to your point, referring once again to that first slide in the presentation this evening, there is the reference to the Mass General Laws that require local school committees to review and license local schools, quote, "when satisfied that the instruction in all all the studies required by law equals in thoroughness and efficiency and in the progress made therein that the public schools in the same town provide." So that's the standard that we use, and I think, to your point, it would be helpful when the district does provide us that further background information, if they can sort of expound on what the context is for that licensing and provisioning power of the school committee. I believe we're moving on now to by share, Oliver Davila, for further questions and comments.
Thank you. I'm curious, how much your tuition is?
Sure. So our tuition is about $18,700. And we kind of come at that two ways. One, you know, we know there's a lot of significantly more expensive private schools in Boston and just beyond Boston, and we wanted to, at full tuition, make make the school more accessible to more families. But of course, we recognize that there are many families, you know, that would not be able to access a tuition of of that level. So a there's a significant number of our families, nearly a majority, who in this opening year, who whose tuition is between zero and a few thousand dollars. So we've really kind of worked to use that scholarship fund that we have to create that accessibility, that greater accessibility.
And in terms of the K to six, why did you land on sixth grade? Is it because the space is so small, or is there a specific reason why it's not a K to eight and it's a K to six?
Yeah, so so part of it was driven by real estate, you know, where the we're only able to fit so many classrooms in this space. But when we talked to a number of our families that were interested in the school right from the get-go, when we were considering, should this be a K-1 through eight, should this be a K-1 through six? A lot of those families said, we're, you know, we're really, and many have kind of very interested in Boston Public Schools, exam schools, and or other options that begin at grade seven. So that was kind of part of the motivation.
And can I ask, I don't know if it's a question for you, Scott, or you're the superintendent or chair, but you mentioned transportation earlier, and you said you don't need it now. But if there was a time when you requested it, would we have to provide it?
I can defer to other folks as well, but I I'm happy to, I'm happy to to speak to what I know, which is for all private schools in the city, if there are students who live a certain distance, depending on their age, away from the school, state law says that the city is responsible for providing transportation for those students. Again, we're kind of, you know, we've been mindful of that and are, in all honesty, trying to kind of create diversity, but also create a neighborhood-type feel to the school, which you can extend into different parts of Hyde Park, Rosendale JP, Mission Hill even, from where we are. So there are not many of our students who would qualify for that transportation anyway, but those who do have said, no, like, our intention is to get our own children to the school each day.
So, Scott, I just, please don't take personally anything I'm going to say, but I am a Rosendale resident, and so I have major concerns about what we're trying to create. We're trying to create a BPS community in Rosendale, and I also understand that parents have their own choice to make, and I support fully whatever choice, you know, families want to make that's best for their children. But I have concerns, the ones that were laid out by Dr. Rivera earlier, but in addition to that is the concern around traffic. So that particular area has another school right by it, the BTU School. Additionally to that, there's a ton of new housing around that Forest Hills area. It takes me 45 minutes before this construction is over to get from my street, which I'm only like 10 blocks away. which I'm only like 10 blocks away, to Forest Hills. And then all of these new apartments are coming up. There's, it's huge, the redevelopment in the Forest Hills area. So I'm very nervous about the, the traffic. Because it is K to six, I imagine none of those little kids are taking public transportation. And so that's going to add a huge factor to our neighborhood. So one is that we're trying to create, you know, this neighborhood that already, there are already numerous challenges, because we have K to five schools, you know. And then coupled with the transportation, the traffic piece, future transportation asks, which concern me for our budget. And then, lastly, that it's K to six, you know, I'm a little bit, I have strong feelings when I hear that families, oh, then they're interested in Boston Public Schools after sixth grade. You know, I feel that, to me, that's, I have a hard time with that, because all the rest of our children that are in BPS, but then, you know, are competing with, and it's not, it's not your fault. I, I, please don't take this personally, but I just do have really strong feelings about it as a, as a Rosendale, you know, member of this community and what that means for, for our neighborhood.
Thank you. Can I just address the transportation question briefly? And I appreciate all of your thoughts, not just to focus on that one. But we have thought about this as well. And it's one of the reasons we have a very staggered start and end to the school. So there's actually six different dismissal times each day, and then an hour-long drop-off window. And there's multiple reasons for that, but part of that is to ensure that, that there are no significant impacts on, on the local traffic based on the size of the school, but also then spreading the coming to and from the school out.
And Mr. Given, and thank you, Vice Chair, for your questions and comments. On the question of obligations on the part of the district to provide transportation for students in private schools, it's always been my understanding that our obligation extends to students enrolled in parochial or charter schools, but not to other private schools within the city limits. So I'm going to ask our legal counsel to give us further input on that, and whether or not that would have any impact on our system as a whole. Again, I, I think that's, that's something helpful for us to know. We often want to know that we're going in the right direction on our, our transportation costs as the district redlarge. But that's also, I think, acknowledged through some of the discussions tonight around what our limited obligations are under the law. A question that's separate from what our review process is here for the license request that's been put before us. So I want to look around briefly to see if there are further questions or comments from the committee for Mr. Harris and Mr. Given. Well, hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to thank you both for your presentation tonight. Much appreciated that you were a late addition to our, our agenda last week. And we appreciate you being in a position to go forward and, and present on this presentation tonight. We have a lot of items that have been backed up because of COVID and our switch to online meetings. And so having folks that have been willing to be flexible with us in, in getting through the work that needs to be done this school year has been deeply appreciated. So thank you for that. We'll look forward to, Mr. Harris, you providing that additional information that we requested and to taking action on this request at the next meeting. We'll move on now to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. For public comment on reports.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. New business from the members. Okay, I'm taking a look around. It looks like there's no further, there is no new business. So that concludes our business for this evening. I want to thank folks for joining us once again. I want to thank particularly the, I think it's about 32 hearty souls that are non-participants in this meeting that are still with us as attendees. You guys deserve a gold star. And we deeply appreciate your continuing interest in the school committee and the work that our district is engaging in on behalf of our students every day. I do, you know, I think we, we've probably spent some portion of every one of these meetings reflecting on just that Herculean effort that our 10,000 employees across the district have been making over the last month plus in making the transition to online, making the, the transition to physical distancing, while still maintaining learning, appropriate learning environments for our students, and continuing just to do the things like feed our students every day and meet the needs of our families. So I can't thank you all, for those of you with the district and those of our partners that have been working with us for, for doing all of that work. We couldn't, we couldn't make it this far without you. And I want to thank, once again, our crack staff, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Parvex, and our folks from IT, Ms. Gutierrez, and the CIO, Mark Racine, for putting on these meetings. It's deeply appreciated as well. So if there's nothing further, I'll, excuse me, I do need to note, because we have concluded our business, the school committee will hold its next meeting on Wednesday, May 13th, back here again on Zoom. And as a further reminder to folks, we will continue to start these school committee meetings at 5:00 PM for the foreseeable future, as long as we remain meeting virtually. So if there is a motion to adjourn, I will receive it at this time. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And as a reminder, we do need to take a vote. So if there's no discussion or objection to the motion, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. Lucanto?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you once again to my fellow members and to the superintendent and her team. I wish you all a good night and good health.
Popcorn.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.